All right. Call to order, the regular council meeting September seventeenth at six P M.
I already talked to you about it.
Called to order, declare a quorum. We'll do the flag salute. Chief Coy and invocation of Chief Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we stand here today in awe of your goodness and mercy, we invite you to be present among us in the power of your Holy Spirit. We ask your guidance and direction in all of the activities that this council will do and that the work for the people of this city. Father, we declare that we love you and we thank you for all that you have made the way of love known through your son, Jesus Christ. And we ask all of that, in his name, amen.
Amen.
All right. So before we get going, we had the second annual War Acres Multicultural Festival, and we actually crowned our very first Miss Multicultural. And Ms. Miranda Rintiera, if you'll go ahead and come up and just introduce yourself real quick. Up to the podium, yeah. Rinterea. Told you I did not mess it up.
Right here.
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Miranda Rinterea. I am a current student at the University of Oklahoma studying public relations with a minor in Spanish. And I had so much fun at the multicultural festival this weekend. I love getting to see all the performances, getting to learn about different cultures, not just close by the U S but all over the world. And I am so excited to be able to represent the city of War Acres this year. Thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you so much for coming, Ramon, thank you. They gotta head back to OU, so.
Another meeting.
Another meeting. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye bye. All right, item number two, consent docket. Individual items may be deleted from the consent docket. Discussion under action, item number three. Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
You have a question?
About the claims list. Is that in C?
So pull item C.
I guess pull it.
Pull item C. You got a motion? Or first and a second?
Are we removing C?
Removing C, yes.
Motion to approve consent docket, pull item C.
Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right. Vicki?
Okay.
Or Douglas, sorry.
Yeah. I called Pam and asked her some questions about this. I was trying to get an idea of how this works from month to month. And there was one that, I know this is a little teeny one, but the O M L Annual Conference, were we supposed to vote on that? For the $230? We didn't vote on that.
For the attendance, so it's.
Just thinking about yours.
Yeah, we didn't vote on that.
Yeah.
Did you go to it?
I did.
No.
Yeah, I went to the annual conference that we always go to. Always the mayor at least goes to that.
Yeah.
But it's until this year it was.
Also this year.
I didn't know if we could vote on it.
I don't know, I don't think so.
You vote on it effectively when you vote on the budget. And this wouldn't actually fall under since it's not a purchase of equipment, purchase of supplies, purchase of land, anything like that. It wouldn't be something that you'd vote to approve. The reason that we vote to approve them, for example, there's been quite a few items over the last year and a half on the Economic Development Authority. There's been quite a few items on the Economic Development Authority about approving expenditures for training. That's because that's a separate legal entity and under the trust indenture, there's no executive director. You may adopt a budget, but the trust board has to make those decisions. As opposed to on this side where there is an executive under the charter, you adopt the budget, the executive works within the budget, subject to restrictions like purchases of equipment, supplies, things like that. If it exceeds a threshold, you have to approve it.
I always thought we had in the past voted on that sort of conferences and things.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's been, it's been on the trust authority side, but it's.
Right.
Because the way our two, our two trust authorities are set up, there's no staff, everything's done by the board, which would mean everything's done by the board, so.
Okay. That was my question.
All right, take a motion for item C.
I move we approve item C on the consent docket.
I'll second that.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yeah.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right, go ahead and do item number four, reports from staff. Chief Anderson.
Other than the ones that were included in my report, nothing further to add.
Got my notes. All right, Coy.
I do have good news. It was mentioned in the staff report, the written portion, but I just wanted to verbalize thanks to Oklahoma County for the $65,000 gift of a new brush pumper cabin chassis, the bumper, and some of the portions that go on the inside to hold the radios and siren equipment. It's not been assembled yet because we are hoping to get a $100,000 grant through the state that would allow us to outfit it fully. Otherwise, we may have to ask for C I P money or piece it together over time. The, it's a lot newer than the, the old brush pumper, so we can't just take the old skid unit off and move it from the old one to the new one. But this is the, once we get it, take, once we have a new brush pumper in service, then we're gonna give the old cabin chassis to Public Works because they had asked for a dump truck and they're using, I mean, it's so old. It's, it's gonna be a big step up. Also, I just wanted to say thanks to one of the police officers. He started bystander CPR of a cardiac arrest. We've had two this month. And on this particular one, he started CPR. Fire department arrived on scene in about three minutes. And we also have a paramedic firefighter. He took over all of the advanced life support duties. That way, it allowed the, the suffered paramedic to push medicine. They did one round of Epi, the A E D called for a shock and brought that patient back to life. And the patient went home neurologically intact, and so it was a good.
Awesome.
A good success for the month.
I love it. How many, how many of our firefighters are paramedic?
We have one paramedic. We have four advanced E M Ts and the rest of us are E M Ts.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, city clerk?
Nothing today.
Nada, okay. Attorney?
Nothing?
Are you sure? I'm just asking. They'll just blind you.
That's good when the attorney.
Mike?
You don't wanna give me a second bite at the apple. Just recognize all the employees that make the Public Works works and Pam's group that does all the billing and all the phone calls. So are there any questions on the monthly report?
Nope. Does everybody read all 250 pages? Wanna make sure. Okay. I know, I know Vicki did. All right. City engineer, he said there's not really anything extra to report unless more, yeah, nothing else really.
No, just you've got items on the agenda, so.
Okay. All right, and city planner? West Dakota?
Just one thing to note, War Acres did receive the Route 66 Centennial Grant for the wind turbine blade that we discussed last, or two months ago.
We got it?
Yeah, we did. Twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yep. So our match is under what we have allotted for.
Is that matching?
Yes, we approve that.
Do we have to match it?
Yes, we, and that was on the agenda in July when we did that special meeting and we approved the matching funds.
Is it eighty, twenty?
No, it's a fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty, okay.
But we have, the blade I've been told is possi, is to be donated once we get it because they have to modify it with the school up in northwestern Oklahoma to bring it down. So I'm in talks with the school district.
Are they just cutting it shorter?
Yeah, they're cutting it shorter because they're a hundred, well, there's one that's a hundred and eighteen feet, there's one a hundred and twenty-one feet, and there's one a hundred and six feet. So they're gonna cut it down about sixty feet. So, and they'll cap it and modify it and all that stuff, so.
Cool.
And talking to the school about bringing students, artists, to come and do the school side and then have our own art on the other side. So, thank you.
Dakota, how much for that grant again? Twenty-five thousand, thank you. Yep.
Wow.
We have to match that, correct?
Correct. Up to, I don't know if we can actually do, like, hey, twenty-five thousand and then we'll spend whatever, I don't know.
Does it come out of economic development?
You guys authorize it to thirty.
Right. I don't know how much we can, so if we spend, if it costs ten, then we gotta bring ten. If it's fifteen, we gotta bring fifteen, correct?
No, we get twenty-five thousand regardless.
Oh, even better.
So if it is $25,000 or less to do this project, then.
Totally free.
It will be no money out of your pockets.
Ah, score.
Oh.
Nothing out of our pocket.
If it costs less than $25,000.
Oh, cool.
Because that's the amount that you're receiving regardless of how much the project costs.
But we did commit to matching.
Up to $30,000.
Well, if we don't have to spend it, we don't need to. I thought we had to, I thought whatever we got, we had to match in order to spend it.
No, it, it's, it's just to provide a matching amount to show that there is commitment to the project should that amount exceed what you were previously awarded.
Oh, for $30,000, we'd have to put in five.
Then we pay five.
Correct.
Okay.
And does it come out of economic development?
That's what it would, yeah. Cool. Anything else? All right, thank you. Grant writer, I know chiefs, y'all had some conversation with Mr. Weber this month, and we're working on some stuff. There is, whenever I was in, at the O M L, well, actually, you talked to them about the opioid stuff, so they finally got all the paperwork needed so that we can actually collect the money from A G's office. So we have $30,000 sitting in account right now, and then there's also the other $75,000 or whatever that we're finalizing and devising a plan for.
I think this year, we're gonna get seven. It's split up over years.
Over the ten years or whatever it is, okay.
For opioid?
Yeah, the opioids stuff.
And where does that money go?
Whatever we come up with, it, they accept.
Okay.
All right.
It's got rules.
It's got rules.
Everything's got strings attached.
And as long as staff can handle it, we will pursue what we can do. If we can't, if we don't have the manpower to handle it, we're not gonna ask for it.
And I didn't see a report in here from him. Am I missing anything?
I didn't get anything.
No, I, it was just email thread between the three of, or the four of us. So just giving a kind of a verbal on it. All right. We don't have Margaret here? No, okay.
Did you wanna skip to economic development?
Yes, go ahead and skip to economic development.
So you're going to recess.
So we're gonna recess the regular city council.
To recess, city council to reconvene after the economic development. All right, we're doing just economic development?
Correct.
To reconvene after economic development?
Yes. Do we have a motion? I make that motion? Do I get a second?
Second.
We don't need.
No, we don't need a motion? Okay, all right.
As the chair, if there's no objection, then you just are announcing that you're recessing and we'll reconvene after this, this meeting.
There we go. So call to order, declare a quorum. Consent docket, items may be deleted from the consent docket under item three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I move we approve the consent docket, items A and B, as stated in the second, the agenda.
I'll second.
Yeah, we did know what she said.
Morris?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission approved.
All right, we have a guest in from the Route 66, so discussion on possible action on authorizing the mayor to spend $30,000 for the Route 66 Centennial Monument. So this specifically, I wanted to see what you guys want to do because we've had conversations with both Bethany and Oklahoma City because we would put this on Route 66 on both sides that we would talk about splitting the cost with those cities. So please introduce yourself and.
Okay. My name's Brian Brown, and I actually work for Box Audio Visual here in Oklahoma City. About 20 years ago, my colleague there and I did the Oklahoma Streetcar, or Streetclock Project around the state for the centennial. I live very close to here. I live just south of 39th, just west of Ann Arbor. And in the seven years I've lived in this area, it's just bothered me how little recognition there is for Route 66. And so that was sort of what motivated this, plus the passion that I feel for Route 66 and Oklahoma in general. So we began working on this monument project a year ago. And in January, we brought in to collaborate with Stan Carroll, who's a very well-known public artist and metal sculptor. You probably know his, one of his greatest works, which is the Skydance Bridge over I-40. He's also doing this really cool piece of public art at the zoo. So we wanted something that would evoke the nostalgia of Route 66, the classic Americana, but something that would be somewhat uniform and would serve as a true placemaking monument for communities. Part of it, when you're in Oklahoma City, 39th may be the exception to the rule, but a lot of times, you don't really know when you're on Route 66. So functionally, it would be really helpful in central Oklahoma. We're getting ready to, to show it, and I might need a volunteer to help me with the unveiling here.
Mike, look at him go. Get up.
I'm ready. Yeah.
Yeah. Just, whatever you're ready. Sorry, there's, there's a lot of it.
It is a parachute.
It is a parachute?
Yeah. I wish they would just double it.
The guys did a good job of covering it. They just, they were standing behind and they just kept pulling it over.
You break it, you buy it.
It's America, red, white, and blue.
It's just adding the anticipation.
That's right. Discussion possible action.
Oh, my goodness.
There we go, it's getting close.
And then it disappears after?
That is hilarious.
Found it.
We found it.
Found it.
It's like the clown car. All right, so.
Ta-da.
Plug it in. So this is just a prototype of the monument. The actual monument is 16 feet tall at the, at the highest point. You can probably tell if you sit in the back that it's double-sided, so the placemaking for the community is on both sides. You'll see the official centennial emblem on the pole. So if we were looking at this in real life, this here would be about eight feet. So, you know, some of the locations that this could go, I know we have trees, we have power lines and street poles and that sort of thing, so this would have a really strong presence. I will say that we've only started marketing this in the last three weeks because we, we wanted to get that official centennial designation, which we did. And the response has been incredible. So I haven't even spoken to all the communities yet. I'm a little bit, I feel kind of bad. But I, I would like to take your questions about the monument.
Has it been approved by ODOT?
It has. I met with the entire engineering team at ODOT, and this, a week ago, I met with Tim Gatz, and I mentioned to him that we, I was gonna be appearing at this meeting. He said, and I just, I mentioned War Acres. I didn't say anything else. And he said, well, if they wanna put it in the right of way, they need to reach out to their regional engineer, which is Trent January. So, you know, initially, the conversation was no to the right of way, and I think that it's a little less stringent than that. It's just like, let's just make sure we go through the process and do this properly.
Does the center median count as the right of way?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It's definitely the right of way.
But it's the place to put it.
It's out of the way.
But I think, I think the reason he said that was because I was coming to meet here.
That's fair.
Because I did not ask him. You know, we had already kind of, we'd had a previous meeting with the various engineers, the chief engineer. So anyway, to that point, that's not out of bounds. We just need to make sure that, that we get that approval.
Gotcha. Myers?
Well, I don't know for where, where I'm going, but can we do that instead of the blade?
That's what I was kind of thinking, like, what's.
Like, that a whole lot better than the blade.
Well, we got the grant money already, so we're not gonna give back the grant money. And that's going on the school grounds.
Use the grant money for this.
It's already been approved. So the, the blade is a conjunction with Putnam City. It's not just War Acres, that's with Putnam City Schools.
So, and it's part of their new building stuff, their stadium, whatever?
Yep.
Okay.
But the thing that we could do with this is the fact that we wouldn't have to say welcome to War Acres signs that we're gonna replace, that this would actually do that on Route 66 instead of replacing the monument signs that are already there.
Right.
So it would also say War Acres instead of Oklahoma City?
That's right.
What would, what's the cost difference? So what, the monuments, we wanna put a welcome to War Acres, what would those cost?
Do we know what they cost last time?
I think they were either 15 or $30,000 a piece.
Fifteen or.
A piece? That was like 2015, so.
Yeah.
They're probably 30,000 now, each. And are these 30,000 a piece?
This is 30,000 installed.
So it's 30,000 and.
For one.
For one.
Correct.
Or a 16 footer, right?
Right.
16.
And the conversation I had with Bethany and Oklahoma City is to split fifty-fifty. So one side would say War Acres coming in to our city and then Oklahoma City going out and Bethany going out. So to split that 30,000, so it'd be 30,000 total coming to an agreement instead of being sixty.
Oh, but I see there'd be two signs or?
Well, no, like, just the part where it says Oklahoma City.
I see.
So just flipping on the other side. That was a conversation I had with them.
Oh, okay.
But you'd be talking about two signs.
One sign, just the bottom part where it says Oklahoma City, but on the opposite side of that would say War Acres.
You're coming into, it'd be War Acres leaving, it would say Oklahoma City.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant.
I see.
There was a deal with Bethany.
So when they're, when they're going east on 39th, they would see Oklahoma City.
You said you talked.
Well, it'd be two signs, so like, one on each side of, of our, of our three quarters of a mile.
I see, okay.
But just on this one, on the east side, would say Oklahoma City and War Acres, and then the one on the west side would say Bethany and War Acres.
Got it, okay.
The two signs would be 30,000 total, or is that 30,000 a piece?
30,000 a piece, but with splitting it in half, it'd make them 15 a piece.
So our cost would be 30,000 dollars.
Thirty total.
And we would have two signs.
Correct.
And Oklahoma City already agreed to?
They, they said, see what you guys, I told them I'd see what y'all wanna do first before I continued any more conversation.
And Bethany said?
The mayor called me and said, hey, do this, so.
But does she have approval to say?
Because it's her idea, yes, they do.
And who pays the electric on it?
We do.
You do. That's really the requirement.
How would we do that on the split signs?
It's just the construction. That'd be way too convoluted. It's our sign, I mean, on our city limits.
There's already power at 39th and Ann Arbor. The, the sign that was taken out by the vehicle, there's already a board underground sign that we could reestablish. And the Hammond, now for, would we replace the Hammond sign?
Yeah.
So there's already power there for that sign.
Which is way cheaper.
How far was that sign away from the intersection?
What's that now?
The one that got taken out?
Uh, it was probably maybe where you're standing, a little bit from the curve of the curb.
So it wasn't right up to the edge there?
No, it's probably twenty, twenty.
Wasn't right up to the edge. It's in the flower bed, if you've seen the flower bed?
I have seen.
There's a sign that's standing up on a post, that's about where it was.
So there, I, I've seen that many times in my life, but there are trees there, and I do recall the flower bed, so would the thought be to put it in the flower bed?
Probably our word.
That's where the power is, the power is. But we could move the power around if we had to.
Connie, do you want anything to say? Because I know you're designing stuff for us.
I think it's wonderful.
All right. Connie approves.
And what about that red? Is that red gonna turn orange on us?
Pink.
No, it's not.
That's what she said, red turn, didn't you say red?
A metal sign.
Orange turns pink. Orange turns pink, okay, I'm sorry.
I do wanna speak, I wanna speak to that concern a bit though, because the fabrication partner that we're working with is G and S Signs, and they do incredible work. And this, this is a passion project for them as well, so that is metal. You know, but obviously, it's been engineered for the wind speeds now, Oklahoma will test that, but.
Still the whole sign?
It's all routed metal, three-dimensional, that's the finest quality LEDs, the longest lasting LEDs. It's also built in a manner that is easy to service, so, I mean, really, all it is, is internal LED legs.
Oh.
So, you know, if we have to change out the LEDs in a few years or 10 years or something. But the paint, to speak to that specifically. The paint is the finest quality automated paint.
I was like, oh, no.
Actually, he's, he's willing to warranty the paint fade, is what he called it, paint Um, actually, he's, he's willing to warranty the paint fade, is what he called it, paint fade, for eight years. So, you know, if, if there's any fade within eight years, that would be covered.
And how long before it would be up?
I'm sorry?
What is the turn time on if we say yes? When do, when do these get?
If we, if you say yes tonight, I guess wh- what would be the steps involved with the other partners?
I would just have to talk to them, with them. If we approve it tonight, then I would put that into motion to talk with them, so probably another thirty days before we really even approved it ultimately for the financial.
Okay.
And then when, when would they go up?
I don't know, that's, well, so he's giving you the timeline, I just want to make sure where we are on our side on the administration.
To that question. So, I was told that we could have this, you know, they have, they've hit a bill of a law and, and they figured out how to somewhat mass produce these, so, you know, three weeks or four weeks, we'd be able to have it manufactured and we could, we could start putting it in next month, I mean.
Is this something we need to do now? I mean, we're talking, we're already short on budget.
Well, we're not short on economic development budget though.
It's still money, it's still dollars and cents.
We can spend all of economic development, it's fine.
Yeah, pretty soon we'll have it drained.
Well, luckily, you know, whenever we talked about economic development, we put it into the funds, I mean, I think that's supposed to produce around fifty thousand plus um, with the one point seven million dollars with the interest accrued to it in a year's time, so there's that piece of it too, it's not just declining.
So, I like this idea, I like it very much, thank you very much. I'd like to make the statement that if we did this, that we keep the blade to the thir, to the twenty five thousand limit and not go over that. Does that make sense?
It does, but that's also apples and oranges.
Huh?
That's also apples and oranges.
It's dollars, so it's green.
I, no. I get you. Well, you know, the other question is your intention on doing the monument signs and everything else that we're speaking with, with CLS later on, we approve it, do you not want to do anything with it? It'd just be another thing sitting on the shelf? So that's my question, is that, is all this time and energy wasted? That we're just sitting and putting something else just to set up there? Centennial's in another year, twenty twenty six, we can wait and put it up next year.
But we gotta pay for it now.
Not necessarily.
What was your name, what was your name again?
Brian.
Brian?
Yeah.
Um, are other cities doing these too, so they would be like?
Yes.
Following the route?
And you can be a leader.
Yes.
War Acres can be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve on this, but yeah, we already have seven commitments. There's another six that I can't publicly mention.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
I just think it'd be neat to see a chain of them.
They're gonna be.
All up and down.
Across Oklahoma and people want them now, they don't want to wait.
And since we have to replace the monument signs anyway.
Right, that's my thought.
Um, I think it's a good idea. Cause we have to put something up for a sign.
So, like I said, with, with this discussion was to say, do you guys want to do this? And then we have additional conversation with Bethany in Oklahoma City to negotiate, allow me to negotiate that, hey, my council says we're good with this. Now we can bring it down to where it's gonna be fifty fifty split on it, rather than it being us paying sixty on it, which is being conservative about it.
I personally would rather have one sign that said War Acres to designate War Acres as a city and that Bethany put their sign up that says Bethany and Oklahoma City put theirs up, but it designates when they get into your town as opposed to having two different names on the end of town as you're entering or exiting.
That's a good idea.
I just think it's cleaner if you've just got one for each city. Same, same dollars.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I agree.
And more, more centered or, or right there where they're talking about, cause that's just down the street from City Hall.
Yeah, I think we'd have to actually put it at the end because there's light, uh, there's electrical lines going all down the center line.
And we've got trees in the way that, gotta make sure that.
And we'd have to move, yeah, trees and we'd have to move electricity and.
Yeah.
I mean, one is fine, that's the reason why this is up for discussion, so.
So one would be thirty thousand.
Correct.
I do like, I mean, I have to say, you know, hearing your vision, uh, I don't know that people know when they're in Bethany, Oklahoma City, War Acres, et cetera, and, you know, I think people are gonna be going one way or the other, so.
No, they don't.
Their only choice.
They're gonna see the War Acres when they're coming from the west or they'll, if they're coming from the east, so. I could see both, in fact, I thought we were just gonna talk about one side tonight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so if the sign was in the middle of our town, then it would make sense to just have War Acres on both sides.
Right, well, even on the end, it's fine to do it with War Acres, it's just, it was a thought that was brought to me, so I wanted to share it, not holding anything, you know, cards close or anything, but I was just thinking conservatively on how do we get the biggest bang for our buck, because that's what we're trying to do and be a part of this, you know, once in a lifetime thing, so.
And since we have plenty of money in the economic development.
I agree.
I move we approve it. The one sign that says War Acres.
On both sides.
On both sides.
On both sides.
And put it where the leaders say it should go. Thirty ninth and Ann Arbor. Thirty ninth and Ann Arbor. And, um, that way we don't have to wait for another city to, you know, be in agreement with us.
Cool.
Anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion?
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Runthair?
Epstein.
Douglas?
No.
Prince?
Epstein.
Trudy?
Day.
Motion fails.
All right, I guess we're not doing a sign. Thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
And I would say try us later.
I'm sorry?
Never, I'm gonna, never mind.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, um, item number five, uh, discussion of possible action on setting up meetings with the business in town centers and discussing upgrading and properties, making the area more, uh, with more continuity, possible matching grants with the Economic Development Authority, Douglas.
Okay, I wanna table this, um, we were, we didn't have time to, I wanted to meet with Matt and Roger.
Okay.
Um, and he was busy with the festivals, so we didn't have time and I did pull off some information about doing this, but I'm not ready.
Okay, cool.
You don't even have, since it's your item, you don't have to table it, you just.
No action.
Put it on again next month.
Ask Pam to put it on next time.
Okay, I already did, okay.
All right, Pam's already got it.
She told me earlier.
Douglas will talk. All right, cool. Mark, uh, gonna go ahead and adjourn?
Adjourn the.
Adjourn the Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the.
City Council.
City, regular city council meeting unless we need to go to Public Works.
They need to vote to.
We need to vote on that.
Adjourn Economic Development.
If you want to, most don't.
Pam has the paper.
Some may make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn Economic Development.
I'll second, or we can.
Runthair's got it.
Godwin?
Yay.
Runthair?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Trudy?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Prince?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene at the, uh, city, regular city council meeting, item number five. Final public hearing on discussion of possible action on concerning the use subject to review on the rezoning R one, single family residential home to District C three, neighborhood shopping district located at fifty seven oh seven Northwest Forty Second Street, War Acres. Matt?
Dakota will do the substance, but just for the minutes, the applicant is here.
And we're glad they are.
Did this come to city council last month?
So, from a legal standpoint, you would have had this on your agenda last month, except that the, what they'd applied for was a rezon to C four, which is a heavier density zoning district. It wasn't on your agenda because they withdrew that application and reapplied for a lower density C three, uh, so, planning commission saw it, but you all didn't.
Right.
Right. Um, so this is just a straight rezoning application, this is not a special use permit or a special use upon review, just R one to C three. The property is currently vacant, it's an old church, um, it's near like Victory Church, a few other, um, like community areas, and, uh, the application meets all the parking requirements, there's a landscape buffer between the, um, the parcel and the house adjacent to it. I'll let the applicant speak to other parts of the application, but.
One question for you, this zoning has to be changed because the church doesn't own it anymore?
Um.
Is that why it's gotta be changed?
It, it needs to be changed because the proposed use does not fit under R one. Churches fit into pretty much any.
They can be in R one, but nothing else can.
Zone within. Correct.
This was the fellowship hall for the church, wasn't it?
I believe so.
For Publin City.
That's right.
Yeah.
Essentially, if a church is going in, they can go in just about anywhere, and as part of the church activities, they could have events at a fellowship hall. If anybody else is gonna do it, then that's not compatible with the, well, any residential zoning district, especially single family. The, part of the SNAPU and why it had to go to planning commission twice is because it'd be permitted in C four, so would a whole lot of other heavier density uses, so. You know, one of the things that I would always encourage you when you see a rezoning is to remember, they may have a use they want to put in there, they could engage in it for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and if then the property turns over, any of the C three uses would be on the table. In this case, what they want to do, if this was something else, they would have to get it rezoned and then come back before you on a use on review, but what they're actually asking for, if the rezoning's approved, would just be permitted as a matter of right, so.
So we're, we're doing both?
No, you're, what, you're doing the rezoning, or you're being asked to do the rezoning, and if you approve it, then what they're intending to do with the property, they could just do under C three. It's not one of those uses that could affect adjacent properties that you've determined need to come back before you for that particular use.
Can we ask them questions?
Negative, you cannot, no, yes. Yes, and, and, and the applicant, the applicant is a representative of the applicant who's helping them, I think, with the design part of it.
Yes.
Yeah, so he, he may be able to answer just about anything you could throw at him, but.
Okay, um, George Marquez with Civil and Environmental Consultants, I'm here representing Mr. Viatoro, the proprietor, and I'm here to answer any questions anybody may have.
Are all the events gonna be inside?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the maximum number of people allowed? That would be a fire chief question probably, I don't know. Maximum number of people that you'll be allowed?
Uh, that's, so we don't, we haven't totally designed or have designed documents for the building yet, I mean, that would be part of the building permit and part of the building permit will contain a life safety sheet that the fire chief is gonna review.
Okay, and how many parking spaces do you have?
Uh, currently, we're at about sixty spaces.
Sixty parking, okay.
And I think under, it's a thirty five hundred square foot building.
Uh huh.
About twenty five hundred square foot of it would be for seating, uh, food prep and other miscellaneous rooms, mechanical rooms and all that. Open area would be about a thousand square feet, so we're looking at about forty five spaces required, so we're exceeding that right now.
Yeah, and that is one thing, just, you know, just not for this application, but for all applications is to remember is that if they want to tear down the building, build a new building, we, our ordinance has already addressed, you know, for every, depending on the type of use, number of parking spaces per square foot. And so what he's saying is under the existing, if they use it, what they've got right now, he thinks, and I mean Dakota would be, could speak to it better than I, uh, that what the code requires forty five, and right now he said he got sixty. So if you want to build a bit, build a bigger building, he'd lose parking spaces and potentially need parking spaces, so.
Right.
Your interior, number of people approximately that would fit in that building? Ballpark?
Ballpark, I'm gonna say, I mean, given the small venue, maybe fifty to sixty.
Reason I say that, I mean, I'm blowing American legend, we leased our property out to, uh, as a concept, when a fifteen year old Hispanic turns fifteen, I forget what that's called.
Yes.
Pincenera.
Yeah, pincenera, yes.
We've had three hundred people in that building. What happens if you have two hundred and fifty people, three hundred people?
Well, no, the intent is never to violate the ordinance, I mean, that's not part of what we're doing here, I mean, the intent is to have this event space for small parties, I mean, in no way, shape or form is the intent to run out to a large party that's gonna like to bring a band or you're gonna have, you know, people are gonna be outside during the event. I mean, this is for.
When?
Small group meetings, uh, children's parties, uh, maybe some instructional classes like Pilates, yoga.
Cause I mean, we're about to, I know, I know how a lot of gets, but.
Right.
I've worked these and they party hard.
No, I completely understand, and I mean, he's, he's aware of what he can and can't do.
Okay.
And so, yeah, we definitely don't intend to violate.
Major concern for the neighbors.
Yes, sir, absolutely, understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I see a facade going up above the building where they're gonna put a sign, seeing that's what it's gonna be, they've got some sort of plywood up there right now. Is that gonna be a lighted sign, or is that just gonna be a, a painted sign?
I believe, um, that's just gonna be siding. I don't believe that there's gonna be a sign on the building, is there?
It's gonna be lit up at night?
Siding.
Uh, he indicated it's, there's gonna be a light, some lighted letters, about six inches, maybe eight inches at most.
Will this be on twenty four hours a day?
Uh, no.
Only when there's an event.
Operational and, yeah, and just up to when the event may end, then everything gets shut down.
Good, all right, thank you.
What are the planned hours of operation for this facility? I understand this isn't used subject to review, but I'd like to know by.
Right.
Approving a C three, um, I think they've got pretty wide hours of operation available, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that right next to this, uh, residential area. Isn't there a lower level of commercial that would allow this operation, not C three? What's C one and two?
C one is suburban office, C two, which I'm not even sure if we've got any C two, actually, property zone, C two.
I don't think we've done any C two properties anymore.
Pam's didn't know.
There might be one.
I've never heard it.
Pam's never heard it.
I'll, I'll read you, I'll read you the description of C two.
I don't recall seeing it on the map anywhere.
I'll read you the description of C two, C two, the C two restricted commercial, district is intended to provide a place for those office and institutional activities requiring separate buildings or building groups and whose employees and clientele are of a larger number and do not necessarily live within the community. Landspace, aesthetic requirements of the uses make desirable location adjacent to retail commercial activities. Uh, looking at the uses that are approved, art galleries, assembly hall for a not-for-profit corporation, libraries, museums, schools. Schools, schools, clinics, convalescent rest or nursing homes, funeral homes.
But not commercial assembly.
Looking not as a permitted use, looking at uses on review, churches, daycare centers, residential uses that are associated with and benefit the occupants of, so no, it really wouldn't fall under C two, and if it doesn't fall under C two, C one, just.
Less, more restricted.
You go down, it contracts, you go up, it expands.
Cause if it was on a major arterial, well, this would be a moot point, it wouldn't matter, but it's kind of tucked away behind Victory back into that neighborhood association, it's surrounded by churches and houses.
And if you look on, and, and to be honest with you, if you look on the zoning map without regard to how the property's being used, it looks odd, because, you know, Victory is zone R one, the church across the street, R two.
Oh, they changed it?
R two.
It's a, it's a pink color on the map.
And, and so it looks like you'd be putting a commercial right in the middle of residential. Now, in theory, if Victory ever went out of business or that location went out, somebody could snatch it up, if it's R two, they could look at coming back in for, you know, subdivide it, do some multifamily residential there, and then you'd have a commer, C three commercial smack dab in the middle. Practicality, so you kinda got zoning map versus the practicality of how it's actually being used, how it's actually being used to the west and to the south, I believe, i- is not your traditional residential activity.
Right, multifamily, south.
Yeah, I think there's church across the street.
Right, yeah, there's, and then there's that.
Church cross street, and there's duplexes or something, I think.
Center, I think that's also there, I don't remember what it's called, City Center?
Yeah, City Center.
Yeah, City Center.
It's near there.
Yeah, that's a nonprofit, so they'd be wherever they want.
Can't do everything they want.
What?
Did you ask hours of operation?
I asked, yes, but I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Okay.
Right, um, it's whatever the allow, the ordinance would allow. We're not saying that that's gonna be a frequent, let's say it's, cause I don't know what the code says, to be honest with you, but if.
I mean.
We're allowed to go up to one AM, I'm not saying, we're not saying that there's gonna be frequent events that are gonna go that long. There may be a rare occasion when that happens, but.
Again, we're not approving this application, we're approving the zoning, and I've got an issue, and I'm assuming that if a twenty four hour seven eleven wanted to go in, it could use it, cause it'd be zoned for it, C three?
Yes. A- and I will say the only, the only use in C three that can have a, you know, automatically by default, you, you have to get into the hours of activity as a use on review for a home occupation, uh, which doesn't make a lot of sense in C three, but whatever. You're, okay, so with the use on review, you can impose reasonable restrictions that still allow for the use, but impose a restriction on a particular lot. With a straight up rezone, it's the zoning code.
Exactly, that's, that's my concern. It's not the application that he wants to use it for, that doesn't concern me. It's the zoning, what that zoning would allow, when he's through, if he decides to close this in six months and sell it to the highest bidder. The zoning stays, that's my issue.
The only way to address your concern would for it to not be a rezon to C three, I mean, at least to my way of thinking, the only way to address it would be to not do a rezon to C three, but to do a rezon through like a simplified or a normal PUD or a simplified PUD, which, for those of you who've probably heard me say before, those are essentially custom zoning. Normally, you would look at a PUD or simplified PUD and just say everything's C three, but nothing says that you can't do the design statement where it would be a very limited.
Right.
Set of uses from C three, and you could also do things like hours of operation, I mean, it's customized zoning, that'd be.
How long have you been trying to get this zoned?
They applied last month.
Right.
Then the only issue was, geez, C four, I mean, C four is basically Northwest Highway.
More, yeah.
Uh, and so anything that could go on Northwest Highway could go here, and discussing it, once we discovered what, you know, had a better idea of what they were wanting to do, they don't need C four, you know, if they want to do traditional rezoning, C three gets them there.
I, I really don't have any issues with his application, I have issues with the zoning.
Right.
And if we can. For that reason, I wouldn't vote to approve this, but if we could get a restrictive use of that same application, then that would work. If the only way to do that is in spud, then.
I mean, Mark, Dakota, that's, that's what comes off the top of my head, to avoid the potential of other C three uses going in there.
Right, I'm, sorry, I don't like to obviously just bring my phone up here, um, I'm trying to figure out whether or not this is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. I do believe that, from, off the top of my head, I believe that part of that corridor is for commercial, but I just am trying to confirm whether or not that's the case. But I think if we were to look at potentially going another route, then a spud would make the most sense, because it does allow for that restriction and you'd be able to put the zoning in a C three, but create the restrictions that you're looking for.
That would go with it.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I'd recommend, for me, that's how I would vote, I can't speak for anyone else. Right.
Do you wanna refresh us on why you're cautious about that, like, just too much possible?
Well, there's too many things that are allowed in C three.
Yeah.
For this location that happens to be in the, oh, if it weren't for Victory Church, it'd be smack dab in the middle of residential.
Yeah.
And C three, this isn't offices, this is C three, this allows a lot of commercial activity, I don't even, are bars allowed in C three?
Think, think, uh, yeah, I, let me look.
I feel like that would be a special use if anything.
Bar, bar is a special use, restaurant, uh.
And it's across the street.
Restaurant, as long as the majority of the sales was in alcohol, a restaurant with alcohol would be allowed, uh, okay, if you, if you wanna get a general idea of what is allowed in C three, forget about the hundred, three hundred feet as you're approaching the two expressways, anything along MacArthur, Fifty, Sixty Third, Thirty Sixth, those are all gonna be C three.
Right.
Properties, so all the uses that you see there, with the exception of some dispensaries which are legally non-conforming now, for a few of them in C three, those are all the uses that you can engage in in C three. I mean, I can read you from the ordinance, but you can, you can see with your own eyes what's in C three right now.
And again, this was put in as part of a church, they can go in anywhere, that's, that's the issue, this would have never been allowed if it weren't part of a church building.
No, no, not in R one. No, no, not in R one. Or R two, or R three. Maybe R three if it was part of like an apartment complex and they had like a meeting room. So, Councilwoman, to answer your question, I think what John is saying is, vet halls not his issue. It turning over and turning into a restaurant, it turning over and turning into a seven eleven, a sales activity, it turning over and turning into a doctor's office, it turn, you know, the C three carries with it a whole variety, a wide variety of uses.
And it is close to residential, I didn't check.
It, it's surrounded, but from a technical standpoint, and this is where I was, what I was trying to emphasize with the practical versus technical, from a technical standpoint, if you look at the zoning, zoning map, it is surrounded by R one, R two, and then when you get to the southwest is when you start getting some commercial, but, you know, if I were just, as, you know, if I were a city planner, just looking at the zoning map without actually looking at what it looked like on the ground, I would think this seemed a little off to ask to put a C three in the middle of what's pretty much surrounded by residential. When you get on the ground is when you see that, that, yeah, it's surrounded by residential, but those residential's are churches that, you know, can go into residential.
Half of them.
Yeah.
The west side is churches, the east side is residential.
Residential.
And so it's kind of ha, it's right on the borderline, but it's half and half. If it were your house sitting there, that's how I'd vote.
Are we gonna open this up to the public?
Uh, yeah. I'll entertain a motion to open, up a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Okay?
I'll just hang on about.
Evans?
Yes.
Von Thayer?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Good.
Mayor?
Abstain. Just because I wanted to.
Case, there's anybody here?
Abstain means no, you know.
I know. I just felt like it.
Okay, the hearing's open.
Yes, it is.
Anybody here?
Anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this item?
Anybody care?
Nobody does. Alright.
Okay.
With that, we will take a motion. We're gonna close public hearing.
Okay.
Somebody second?
I did.
Okay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers? We're closing the public hearing.
Well, they're
Well, there's probably yes.
Douglas?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Prince? Von Thayer?
Yes.
Mo, uh, Mayor?
Abstain.
Motion approved.
Alright. Any other discussion that you all have for the architecture owners?
Is there a way to put, is there a way to put restriction on it like we did Covenant? I mean, we don't own the land, obviously, but is there a way to put, Dawn was saying, some kind of restriction on it without having to redo the whole thing?
Not through, unless Mark or Dakota have come up with something ingenious, the only way I can think to do it, I mean, what you're asking, what's being asked of you is rezone to C three. If you rezone to C three, the C three ordinances apply.
Right.
That's, I mean, what comes to my mind is the PUD or simplified PUD, because then you could customize the uses that were permitted and potentially address issues like, if the commercial goes out, would it potentially revert back? Would, you know, residential uses be allowed, which with a lot that size, you could really only use it for one or the other, but you could, that's the nice thing with spuds and PUDs is you can customize the zoning.
Right. And in like confirming with the comprehensive plan, this part of town is listed as transitional, so essentially it's like a slow transition from commercial to residential. And so I think the best way to move forward is going to be
Commercial to residential or residential to commercial?
I was thinking from MacArthur over, so it's
Oh, okay. You're saying a buffer?
Yes, a buffer.
Not, not that we're trying to transition it, but that this is
From commercial towards residential.
Okay.
Um, so we're thinking that the best way to move forward is gonna be to withdraw and come back with the spud, with the C three zoning, but the restrictions as requested.
So, how long would that process take?
Um, I mean, it, a spud doesn't really take long to write up, so it would just be a matter of getting it written up, getting it back to the planning commission.
Okay. And talking about dollars and cents, would it cost the applicant any more money to do so?
I think the application fee for a spud is different than for rezoning, but I don't remember what the numbers are for that.
Okay.
For the actual application.
If you withdraw this, would you get a refund on that application?
The application fee.
Use it for spud?
Application fee was, is primarily designed, I mean, it's a little bit of the design review, but it's also to help recoup the cost of the public hearing notices.
Right, okay. So
And that already happened?
I mean, I, I would, as occurs to the applicant, just inquire of the council members. We know where John's at, uh, which is, we usually know where, where John's at. What I would hate to have happen is to go this route, have the applicant go through the process of developing an SPUD, which as Dakota said, it's, the, part of the reason we built the SPUD ordinances was to make it more simplified than a full-blown PUD. Would, are there any inherent reservations about the use of the property for an event center, other than what John expressed, which was essentially, and all the other things it would open the door to? I mean, if, if all they want to do with the property is an event center, and it can be done in addressing the concerns that John raised, are there any concerns?
Any objections right now?
Or, or any additional concerns that could be worked into and addressed in a simplified PUD?
Well, you could do, you could address the lighting
Yeah.
that you would want to address with a commercial, the hours of operation, traffic, egress, planned egress. Those are the items that I've been looking for that I'd like to see addressed in a spud, but.
But those are all pretty standard items in the spud. We have a, a template master design statement that includes all of those things. Um, the, the one thing that i- is the important part here is that we're looking at, it would still be considered C three, but we have to go through and look at all of the uses and only list the ones that are allowed. So, we don't want to like restrict it to just one use. So, we'll be digging through the code and like trying to make sure that we get the uses in there that are applicable. But for the rest of the stuff, like the site lighting and all of that, that's already, that'll be addressed as part of that document.
Okay. One of the other questions I have is that, uh, to the, you know, architect, how much is this costing them hanging on to this again and again and again? Cause I know there's overhead costs.
Yeah, well, they've had the property for quite a while now, I think, a year, if I'm right.
Why would the architect charge more?
Purchased it.
I apologize.
Number nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. So, and they've been renovating it, doing all the things they've been doing?
Yes, the, so he started renovating it based on what the city had told him, and then they kind of stopped him in his tracks and kind of told him, hey, you're gonna have to go through this rezoning process to do whatever you need to do, right, for the event center. So, uh, given the concerns from council, uh, we won't have any issue withdrawing the application and resubmitting for a spud. However, we would like some sort of, um, I guess, ability to allow the proprietor to do all of the maintenance that the building needs right now, cause it's kind of, it, it needs maintenance.
Yeah.
So he kind of needs to kind of update some of the HVAC, maybe.
He's keep moving forward on it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. He just doesn't want it to
I have a question. Does Article three, number seven, allow you to, um, refund the, uh, fee that they paid for the one and then, so that they don't have to pay as much for the spud?
Well, I would hope so.
It says grant pardons for violations.
Because this is a city council and
Including the remission of fines and costs upon recommendation of the council, so.
No, that, that's gonna be fines and court costs, like in a criminal case.
Not, it doesn't apply to fees.
Publications?
And applications.
Publications. So, the cost has to go out, so they have to pay to send out another notice to what, three hundred foot radius or whatever?
The, the only time that I can recall that we waived publication fees are situation, like, we've had a couple since I've been here where we sent out notices of the public hearing, and we got to a planning commission meeting, and we couldn't get a quorum. Well, at that point, we can't gavel the meeting to order to notify the public that we're continuing the public hearing, so we have to send out a new notice. It also means we can't hold the city council public hearing on it, cause you can't hold yours till the planning commission sends a recommendation. So, in those situations, we waived the application fees since we had to send out another mailing, but since it was our ability
Is there anything that would allow Roger to do that?
Not in a situation like this.
Okay.
So, my other question is that, how, the reason with Dakota, the reason why I ask this is that, is there a way that we can call a special city, cause we're gonna have a special city council meeting in about two weeks. So, my other question is that how
No. Well, there's nothing that would stop a special meeting, except that we have notice requirements in a time, timeline that the notices have to be mailed out in advance, so.
Someone to know what that timeline is. So, if we say, if there's no other objections, is this something that you guys are willing to see go through as long as we're able to put the restrictions on? So, make that agreement now.
Well, we can't do that because we don't know what's gonna be allowed yet.
We can't vote on it.
Until they look it up and put it in the, the application.
Well, but we know, he wants to have a event center, and there's all these things, and an event center is an event center.
But that's not the only one that'll be listed on there, because if he does decide to sell the property, he doesn't want to be locked down to just an event center. He's gonna want a few other items on there that he could, that it could be used for. And until we see those, we have no way of knowing whether we deem them agreeable or not.
So, Dakota, I know you're leaving town. Mark, how fast could we put something together?
Yeah, we, we, we'll, we'll work with the applicant to re, resubmit. We'll give them our typical
They have to explain it to mission first.
Right. So that was my question on publication timeline. If we did something with
Twenty days.
Twenty days?
Paper takes more than twenty days.
Never mind. It's out.
Well, we'll, we'll just give them our typical design statement and work with them to get it back on.
Okay. Alright, I answered a question. Thanks, Mike.
And then, yes, we'll have, we'll bring the uses they propose, and you can, in that event of, of doing that, you can strike or add.
Right, exactly. And then, if we can go ahead and, and you can give them the approval to, to continue their maintenance and
I mean, yeah.
and do their upgrades that they need to do for the property, I, I don't see any issue with that.
Uh, ha, having heard no principled objections to what the idea is
Right.
my, my assumption is that the mayor would be reading the room as, you're probably going to approve something that would allow for an event center, as long as the other issues can be addressed, at which point, I mean, frankly, my advice to the mayor would be if they, they're going in with open eyes, uh, you know, they can read the room as well. There's no reason they can't, the mayor can't authorize them to move forward on some of that. We just can't allow them to start using it.
Correct. Yeah, no option.
Right, right.
Well, if they can do maintenance work, they just can't do anything that's gonna require a building permit beyond, yeah.
No, absolutely.
Cause part of the building permit review process is to make sure that you're consistent with the zoning.
How, how far along are you in the remodel, in the things? Because that's, I mean, HVAC require a permit, electrical require a permit, plumbing requires a permit, building walls require a permit.
Right, I, I would have to sit down with my client to exactly know how much time he needs. But right, you know, right now, if you were to go by the building, some of the exterior is exposed right now.
Right, well, that is, yeah, so.
We need to cover that up.
Yeah, as soon as possible, cause winter's coming.
Exactly.
Can't get here soon enough.
Yeah, no, the intent is just to kind of maintain the building. There's not gonna be, you know, public going in or any sort of, you know.
Yeah.
People that are gonna be inside the building, just maintenance and get it up to date.
Mike, do you have any objections on the city side?
On what? You maintain the maintenance part of it? I put stop workover on this guy. They will just do it. And then I told them, I said, you can't have events in a all one situation. And the body, the public school, a church right across the street, I believe. They just sold it to them, saying you can do anything you want to, and they, this way I think.
Oh, man.
They did proceed to go and do that, they can do that.
Okay. So, from an insight point with the, so, just to put it out there that, does anybody have any other objections to them continuing because of the fact that they were turning it into an event center, minus the couple of things that, you know, which will be reasonable and they'll bring it to what we need, to allow them to finish doing things inside this building so that they don't have to be continuing to wait again and again and again?
No objection.
Cause this is somebody's livelihood.
No objection.
As long as it's small events. I mean, it's, it's not like the Conterra.
No, 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 absolutely. I mean, that's
Yeah, they're not doing
This is, this is a small venue.
Yeah.
I mean, so, given that, I mean,
Yeah.
like I said, I mean, it's gonna be limited, it's gonna have a maximum occupancy.
Yeah.
And so it's, yeah. By no means it's gonna be a larger event space.
Okay, so I just want to go over the concerns that I've heard, just to make sure that we get this correct on the application the next time around. So, we need to be specific about the hours of operation. We need to be specific about the allowed uses up to a point that is reasonable for uses that are next to residential. We need to be specific about the fencing around the site, landscaping. Are there any other items that
Signage.
Signage, okay. These, I mean, they're all pretty standard, but I just want to make sure that we're addressing it so that we don't end up having to rewrite part of it again.
And, and parking is plenty, right?
Parking, part, yes, parking is sufficient per the base zoning.
Hours of operation?
Right.
And, and that, well, and that, and that's one of the conversations that we need to have right now, too, because event centers, I mean, you're doing weddings until midnight. I mean, I was in the industry for a decade, and a lot of them end eleven o'clock, midnight. So, is there gonna be objection about that for this business to exist?
If it's inside, it's not like they're gonna have outdoor music, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Um, the intent is to everything be inside the building.
Right.
Nothing outside.
Because it's a concern that it needs to be addressed, because again, that's gonna be something that's gonna come up, and we just need to have that conversation now, because if that's an objection, you're harming, again, a business, and that's, like, what is the industry standard?
And the number of days per week that that could happen.
Yeah, usually like Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I mean,
Right.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday are usually off days
Yeah, week
in the industry.
Weekdays, school days.
Outside of daytime stuff. I mean, there's usually daytime stuff sometimes, too. I mean, you can't hinder a business for operating in those ways, I, I feel, you know, cause event centers have stuff in the morning, afternoon, evening, into the late evening. You know, midnight for some weddings. I mean, it's pretty normal. Uh, the owners are from El Salvador, you know, the
Right, I mean, like I said, the intent is, I mean, it is gonna be a business.
Yeah.
And yes, we do want it open during the weekdays, you know.
Right, but not till midnight.
During the daytime. Yeah, I, I mean, like I said, we don't expect to have events that are gonna go that long. There's gonna be a rare occasion, I'm sure. I'm not gonna say never, but given the venue space, it just wouldn't handle a large party like that.
Right.
So.
We would have an objection if this are going late.
Not so much on the weekend. More, for me, it's more weekday. You're associated with a school around it, churches and schools, so the weekend, I don't see the hours, late hours being as bad if midnight's kind of the limit. Don't want it three or four in the morning, but.
The, Pam asked me a question that I'll share the answer with the recipe. If the applicant's gonna withdraw the application, they can withdraw their application. It'd still be germaning to the item if one of the concerns the mayor raised was the application fee for an SPUD, and that this is, they've already paid two fees. Uh, council could vote to authorize the mayor to waive the application fee for a spud.
Is the notice that was set out, since this is still the same event center, it's still the same zoning, does that still count?
It, it would not, because what the public was notified is that you're looking at a straight-up rezone to C three, as opposed to notice that there's a proposal to rezone to a customized zoning, which would then allow them to ask questions about what the SPUD terms were.
And we also opened and closed the public hearing, cause nobody has any objection from the public that got the notice. So, I would very much appreciate allowing that to happen of having a waiving of the fees, because this would be the third time, which is ridiculous. So.
I don't remember saying this before, for this to be a third time.
You didn't see it because it got stopped at planning commission, they withdrew their application at planning commission, so there's no reason to have it on your agenda last month. But planning commission saw it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move the mayor waive the fee for their third-
Simple, application for a special unit, or simplified planned unit development.
Yeah, what, what Attorney Love said.
I'll second it.
Morris?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Myers?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission person.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Alright, item number six, public hearing discussion, possible action on concerning the use subject to review for a child daycare center located at forty-six oh one North MacArthur, where acres, Brad.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant, for the record, the applicant is here and, and I'll steal some of, I'll, I'll steal some of Dakota's thunder here. This is something that had already been approved as a daycare in years, like many, many years ago. But, for those that don't know, these uses on review, if you do approve them, if they go out of business, if they cease the use for a period of time, then they lose the approval. And so now, that's what happened here. Previous daycare shut down for an extended period of time. Now, new occupants, owners, I don't know if they own it or if they're renting it, wanna open back up a daycare. But since it had been dormant for so long, the prior approval was lost.
I think you stole all of it.
All of it.
Aww.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not much else to say. I, I believe it's a C4 zone. It's on MacArthur. Um, there's ingress and egress at two different points, so along MacArthur and then on forty-fifth. Is that what it's on?
Yeah, it's forty-fifth.
Okay. So, two ingress, egress points and then all at the application.
C3.
There you go.
She's more of the mind behind it all.
If you'll just introduce yourself, name, address.
I'm Brad Amon. This is my wife Kristin. This is really her baby, but I'm supporting it.
An address?
Um, forty-six oh one North MacArthur.
So, I talked to the owner about this. Was there a fire or flood in there and then you guys came in and remodeled it? That's the reason why it shut down in the first place, I think.
Um, I don't know why it happened.
Okay, I know they came in and remodeled it all, but-
They, yeah, they replaced the flooring. Um, so it's all like remodeled, remodeled. Um, but I think they redid like the flooring. And they painted. And I think they did some repairs on the roof. I think there was like a leak. I think they like, the, the building was left kind of abandoned and then like there was a ice storm and it caused damage. And, um, the owner thought that the person was in there and they weren't, so then the other happened. So, they had to replace the flooring and ceiling, I think some ceiling tiles and stuff like that.
Good deal, yeah.
But the walls are all still the same, like everything structurally stays the same. Like even the shelves and stuff are still.
Very cool. Alright, thank you.
So, you live there and you're gonna have a daycare there or what?
No, 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 no. Oh, no. Did you want my home address?
I think that's-
We, we, in years past, we've allowed applicants to state their home, to state the address at, at issue, to state an address.
Okay. That's why I was confused because you stated the pla- the business address and I thought that's where you live.
If she lived there, that would be non-compatible with the zoning district.
I live in Lansworth, sixty-twenty Harwich Manor.
Any questions for the applicants?
And you realize there's quite a few daycares in that area?
Mm-hmm.
I do.
I guess there's a need. I didn't know.
Yeah, and we have, we have maybe a different approach.
More nature-based, natural, holistic.
What, what do you say?
Sorry, what?
Um, holistic and nature-based, um, is kind of our, our focus. Um, so you know, like, we don't just focus on like academics or just focus on play.
We like see the whole child and we make sure that we're, you know, mindful of their like nutrition and their exercise and all the little aspects that-
Holistic, yeah, holistic.
Mental health.
Um, yeah, so we get, um, I mean, we have typical kids too, but we get a lot of kids that are like kicked out of other centers and stuff like that.
Is it, is it like Montessori a little bit?
We do. So, I say that we're a blend of Montessori, Waldorf and Reggio-inspired. So, we do a lot of the practical life and, um, like life skills and stuff like that. Like we teach them how to wash their dishes and put on their shoes and stuff like that. But then we still do, because that can be a little bit too structured for some kids. So, we still have like the play base, especially with nature and stuff added in. Um, and then, um, I, I mean, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Reggio and stuff like that. But it's just different, different things. I've worked, um, in this field for twenty-five years and, um, I, um, you know, have always had a passion for the kids who like don't fit. So, we kind of, we get a lot of those kiddos and they do really great in our program and we don't have, we've never had to expel a child. Instead, you know, we see a really big turnover, turnaround, I guess I should say, actually. Um, and then we do like the looping teacher. That comes from Waldorf, the Waldorf. Um, and that is where like we, um, our teachers will stay with their students and they will move. So, they'll go to different classrooms that are set up for their development and stuff like that. But that way, that those entire early years, they have that, a healthy attachment with a consistent caregiver.
Does it go through pre-K?
Do what?
Does it go up to pre-K or?
Yes, yeah. Or, well, I even have some kids that are doing like ethnic charter school and stuff like that. So, we, we have a few kids. We have the small, you know, a small room for that.
Oh, wow, okay.
Do that with them. And my own daughter, um, she was dyslexia and stuff like that, so we do that.
Michael, Myers, your region.
Has this, has this facility been upgraded for ADA? Does it meet all the current code standards? Because it's a residence, so it's elevated. It's not at ground level like most businesses would be now.
Well, it's, uh, it's been in childcare for what, thirty-plus years, uh, if that's what you're asking. It's, it was-
Well, I think ADA is the, uh, disability.
Americans with disability, yeah.
Do you have ramps at the doors? Do you have?
There are not, there are not ramps. Um, I would be, like, I've already researched that because, um, I didn't know it was like a requirement, requirement. Um, and the landlord thought that it was, um, a lot to invest into it because they already had to charity, had to do other repairs. But I have already been researching, um, ways to make, um, where you can get ramps, like metal ramps that will fit to give them their dimensions of the steps and stuff like that. Especially since they're children, you know, so they're smaller wheelchairs and stuff like that.
So, you're leasing this, you don't own it?
Correct, yes.
Mike, aren't they gonna have to have ADA for this facility since they're inviting a Republican?
Set for over a year and then toilet seats and everything else for children.
Every, yeah, all of that is-
Maximum seventeen meters high, uh, to several different-
As long as you're aware of what's gonna have to happen to make this meet current code.
Well, we, we did already have it inspected, um, and the fire, fire has already approved it and everything and, um, the health department has already come out and inspected it. And DHS has already come out and inspected it.
Because my biggest issue, and I'm not gonna make an issue out of it since this has already been a daycare center, is we kind of had an aversion to converting these old houses along the street into businesses because they're not really designed for businesses when they started. And now, that turnover, some of them are really bad and you can't get them compliant. This one's already been that way as long as it can be licensed and brought up to, up to speed. Um, I'm, I'm okay with it. But, I mean, that was part of our whole theme of this town center overlay was to keep these old houses from being turned into non-compliant businesses.
Right. Can, can I mention the two things? And one is that, um, it was actually that she didn't have her business license because, um, she was in there, um, up until October. So, now we're going up to a year. But technically, it was because she closed it and then, um, didn't have her business license. But, um, two, I mean, I know the whole thing because I actually had looked at some properties a while ago because I just really loved, um, you know, um, MacArthur there. Um, and so I did hear about that. But the, the, the house part of it is really comforting to kids because it feels like, it feels like a home. And, you know, um, commercial looks very nice and clean and stuff like that, but it doesn't always provide a, you know, very comforting environment. So, it's kind of really great that it's a house. That was what I was hoping for. And, um, if there's a way, I, I will make it compliant. Because like I said, that's a kind of a passion of mine and I would really, I like to, you know, be available to special needs.
I was gonna say, well, I would suggest that you kind of get with Mike to see what's gonna be required because that's, that's an absolute. Even if we approve this, you still have to get it up to code, so.
Okay.
I would make sure that you know what you're doing going in and that you don't have some surprise expenditures that you hadn't counted on.
Yeah.
Okay, that, those are my questions.
Alright, uh, you have any other questions? We can open up the public hearing.
Hours of operation?
Um, we were thinking like, because with our home childcare, we, yeah, our, words, um, sorry. For a while, we've been doing from like six forty-five to five forty-five, um, in the afternoon, like six forty-five in the morning and five forty-five in the evening. So, I would imagine around that time. I don't want to go much later.
Monday through Friday?
Yes, Monday through Friday. Um, I thought about doing, um, twenty-four hour care because it was that before. But I haven't had a big need for that yet, so, um, I'd rather not because then I would be, so, um-
You need a break every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I would like to stick to the, um, six forty-five to five forty-five.
Thank you.
Alright, do you young go have a seat? Do you, take a motion for a public hearing?
Make a motion for a public hearing.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this item? Take a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Go ahead. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Montaire?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. Alright, I'll take a motion on this item.
I move we approve the special use permit for forty-six oh one North MacArthur as a daycare hours stated.
I'll second that.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mission person.
Congratulations, thank you. Our discussion, a possible action item to approve final signs for the city. Ms. Connie? I know, hard part's done. Ish.
Hello.
Hi Connie.
So, I don't really know what's in your packet. Did you, um, see the sign, the last version? So, since the last time I met with you, we have gotten rid of blue. We have-
Thank you.
We have added orange. We still have a lot of choices, too many choices. We only usually give people three choices. We've got way too many, which is probably why it's hard to make a decision. But I would like to get your feedback on what you think. If you want something else changed.
I didn't like the stars.
I know you did. And I snuck that back in there.
I know, I'm not very artsy.
It's interesting. I have a Subaru. Maybe it's ingrained in me and I didn't realize what I was doing.
That's just my opinion.
I can understand the stars. Someone told me to take all the stars off, but I left a couple. They're easy to take out.
So, what we're approving is the last two pages?
You guys gotta make a decision.
I've got four pages.
I got five. Before, now you're right.
Four, yeah.
She said she got rid of all the blue, but there's blue in there.
I like the circles. I like the circles better than the squares.
Thank you. I'm squareer than you are.
Are you looking for?
Yeah, what page is it on? On the back, back.
It's before that.
I don't know what page I'm gonna put it at here. What are you going on?
I think people would notice-
There we go, there you go.
I think-
Uh, yes.
I think people would notice the circles more than the squares.
Yep.
Yeah, I like the square, the circles.
I vote for these on the bottom. They're very unusual.
Yes, I saw those.
Makes us stand out.
I like the orange and black circles.
So, I'll show you these because I was told to pick my favorite two, my personal favorite two. We gotta stand out. We gotta make us-
Circles stand out more than squares.
Something different, yeah.
Okay, that's the same one I picked.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I thought, I like, I like that.
And I actually, the offset of the center to the outside door.
I think people were even a month ago. I was like, we never made a decision.
But again, it's not a circle.
I like that one and that one, but that one's got the W A big and the War Acres. I love it. Yeah, without the star.
Yeah, I like that one, but I like that one too. With the black, yeah.
Oh, I know, but it's always pitch.
Yeah.
Here's, here's your Tic Tac with a little dirt on it.
They went rectangle and you guys went circle. Let's mix them up. We'll put dirt in the hole. Ward ones and two, we do the square. Ward three, we do the round.
Put the squares in ward two.
Yeah.
I think at this point, you can't go wrong. We've gotten really close to, you know, doing everything that you all wanted. I still will get rid of the star. I knew I shouldn't have done that.
Just for opinions, so.
Yeah. And someone did tell me that to get rid of the star last time, but I-
So, we're basically looking at variations of the orange and black, pretty much, which really ties in. I mean, that's the school colors for Putnam City original, uh, which is the biggest school in our district, so I don't see-
There's a lot of history there.
There's history there and it stands out very well.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And I do hear what Pam's saying is you like the ones that are on the stand, that are on the diagonal stand?
Yeah, the ones that have the diagonal looking.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing that says we couldn't incorporate one of the orange and black ones onto a stand like that. Is there? Is there another change? Sorry.
I was thinking that the diagonals were rejected last time.
Were what?
Were rejected. They were, so I stopped.
They're also more expensive.
Yeah.
Anything that deviates from the standard adds cost.
I like page three. How do we make, do we make a motion on this? Do I just say page three?
Circle, highlight, which one from which side? I don't know.
Well, we got four pages. I'm gonna say I'll make a motion to accept the design on page three, which is the orange and black. We have the ovals on the bottom and the rectangular's on the top, which is, yeah, no. How many do we get to have?
Only one.
Oh, are you serious?
But, one, except that you're gonna have a big sign for a monument. You're gonna have, and we'll come back. Uh, we didn't want to do the whole thing. So, we'll have smaller signs for the park signs. We'll have directional signs. It'll be different. So, we'll come back and show you what one design looks like in all these different ways.
So, we have to have either a rectangle or a circle. Okay.
I don't care if it's round or square. I like the orange and black without a star.
Okay. Rectangle's fine.
From that?
Second. I'll second it.
Yeah, rectangle's-
What, what was the motion?
Well, it was designs on page three that are orange and black and I needed to ask what the rest of that was.
Well, then I corrected that we're picking one, not the whole page, so strike what I said.
Which one do you pick Judy and we'll just run with it?
On the top or on the left or the right?
I'll go with your rectangle. It's fine.
Yeah, me too. Rectangle's fine. As long as it's orange and black.
We don't have numbers associated with this, which is pretty, it's kind of hard to differentiate.
Judy, will you show which one you're wanting?
Is this the one we're talking about? This one?
That's the one, yeah, that one.
Alright, I'm gonna walk it around.
Yeah, walk it around and we'll just say, yeah.
Anna, we need to see it.
Rectangular.
We're talking this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Circle it. Yes, yes.
This one?
Oh, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Anna. The contractors we need.
Partially curved. Good compromise. Okay, it's greater than square.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the rectangle, the, um, vertical rectangle with the orange and black, mostly black. Second one from, third one from the, the middle.
The one you showed.
As shown, as shown by Anna.
There you go.
As shown, sorry. Yeah, I didn't see that one.
That's fine.
Okay, now I have a motion and a second. Myers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Tribby?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Symbol that's on the police car?
No.
I'm glad to say I don't know your police cars, um, but-
No, uh, we, uh-
It's the official city sign. Shouldn't it be the official city sign?
No, you have a- No, you have a, you do have a seal.
This is for parks and all that, right? The signs that we see looking around.
It's directional, not representative.
Yeah. All right, item number eight, discussion of master parks plan.
So again, since I was here last.
And approval, sorry.
And approval of the parks master plan. I have made some changes. I went out to your.
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter.
Yeah, animal controlled group, yeah.
And as a result of that, we did make some changes to the master plan recommending that that Dorothy Cavanagh Park be turned into a dog park. So that shifted a few other things in the plan. Hopefully y'all had a chance to take a look at it. I also corrected some grammatical errors. I've, and I have taken the word draft off the plan, which means that it would be approved. Once it is approved, you can use that plan to apply for grants, and I have brought a list of grants.
Good, give it to Myers. She's excited.
That is a good start for.
Thanks for all your hard work.
I remembered our discussion that you actually can do the grant writing for these.
We do grant writing. Matter of fact, we found out yesterday, we got another one for the city of Kingfisher for three hundred thousand. So once you get, once you get on a roll, it's.
It's going, once it's done and approved.
I move we approve this master.
Second.
I've got a few questions.
Okay.
We just want to get our motions in. Go.
Get your motion in.
Been a year of work.
Got a motion. Is there a second? There still be debate? Okay, okay, then we got a motion, second on the floor, which is still up for discussion and debate.
Because I, I had questions about a lot of the items that we're looking for, that you've got listed in each park. As a master plan, does that mean that this is the direction that everything that's done in the park now has to move towards? As the master plan, how much deviation? I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here that can't, we can't afford to do, we will never be able to afford to do. I'm not sure why it's on here.
It's a master plan. It's your long-term vision. Usually a master plan is looking at twenty years. Sometimes those never get done. Sometimes you pick the most important things that are on the list and do those first. Sometimes you never.
But they weren't prioritized, so that's what I'm saying. They're just open lists.
John?
Kind of pick and choose.
We kind of wanted to do this so we could apply for grants, because they would not give us, we couldn't do it without a master plan. We couldn't apply.
Right.
So deviating from it is possible. It's just a matter of time. I mean, twenty years down the road, I mean, so the village, they're ninety-seven percent done with their stuff that they finalized fifteen years ago, I think. So this is long-term vision planning. It's not absolute, what can the budget afford, what grants can we get, what can we apply for, not get, get, not get.
So we can pick and choose what we want to do, when we want to do it, and how we want to do it.
Yeah, you have to budget the money, yeah.
You can't do that, but you're better off finding the money and then fitting everything to it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but when we get, say we get a hundred thousand dollar grant and page seven, here it is, I got fifteen options, we can do whatever we want.
Usually grants will tell you what they will pay for.
Okay.
So you find the money, you find out what you want, you match those things together, and you start doing improvements.
But we don't have to follow.
Nope.
Don't we have to pri?
My main question too, John.
We have to prioritize, prioritize, I can't talk today, the ADA requirements.
ADA should be your most important, and that will be required by almost every grant.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
I just didn't know if this had the same restrictions as our master plan for zoning for the city. I mean, we can't deviate from it very much, because that's what we're trying to focus on. It's our long-term plan, and you open yourselves up to litigation. If you don't, I didn't know where this was going.
No, it's not that restrictive. It's a long-term goal more than anything else.
Any other discussion, questions, concerns? All right, hold the, hold the roll.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Myers?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mayor's approved.
Sweet.
We have two things done.
Thanks for your hard work Connie.
Now the goal and objective is not to put them on the shelf. All right, item number ten.
Some money.
Until we have some money, so we grant money. That's what we get.
Nine.
Oh, yeah, I missed nine, sorry. Discussion, discussion of possible action on supplemental appropriations of funds, the CIP fund to an amount of forty-three thousand nine hundred and six dollars and seventy-two cents to re-stripe North MacArthur from fifty to sixty-third and sixty-third and Northwest Expressway.
You're not stripping it, you're gonna stripe it, right?
Yeah.
I know, I do that all the time. But is there not funding? I thought when I sat on that thing and listened in on that ACOG and they were saying, oh, you know, these are all things that the city needs to do, that there was possible funding available.
Yes, there is possible funding. So yes, there is possible funding available, but we did have this in the CIP, so if we, if we go ahead and we can move forward with this appropriation.
Well, we didn't have a budget directly.
It wasn't budgeted. That's why I'm asking.
This is, this is, yeah, this is re-appro, so we're not buying, we're not buying a half a million dollar dump truck, garbage truck this year.
So, yeah, okay, so.
So it's re-appropriating funds.
Over into doing this project.
Right, and.
My question is, why would we spend forty thousand dollars if we could get ten even? Sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I'm the money person, sorry.
Don't be sorry.
What we're doing is we're giving you the price for that, so if, if you can move the funds in there to where we can be eligible to do, or where we can do the project, we can then go, we can still go pursue the ACOG funds for it.
And we can, at an administrative level.
I'm just looking for free money.
Right, but, but right now, unless you appropriate, unless, unless you do the appropriation here, there's not really a point for us to do the design now. I mean, we could do, go ahead and get a design.
Okay, so this isn't gonna be like sixty-third or MacArthur where it was immediate done.
No, no, this, this will allow, I mean, we can go ahead and get it.
Well, we do, yeah, and we can.
So this is, this is asking for money that has not been set aside for any other purpose.
To go towards the striping, to budget it.
To budget it, but not necessarily to spend it.
And then it doesn't preclude us from pursuing ACOG or another funding source on it.
But, but what I was getting at is not necessarily spend all of it, some of it. That would still have to come back, which might include coming back with, we were able to get some money to help.
Yes, yeah, this is not, this is not saying, if you approve this today, this is not saying that we actually even have the specifications ready to go do the project. We do not. This is saying, move the money.
Appropriate.
Appropriate the money so that you have it. Then we can go ahead and prepare the specifications and the design part of it, and then have it ready. We can still pursue the other ACOG.
Right.
Funding.
Right.
And that's, that's the plan to do that.
And I'm sure it doesn't hurt to say, hey, we have money, but we'd love to have some of that leftover money.
If you don't, then if you don't get it, then you have this money appropriated. You can either do the project or not do the project.
I mean, that's how we did the, we had leftover money from ACOG, and that's how we did the sixty-third light and everything is two hundred and seventy thousand or something like that from ACOG. With caps. Money was, money that was left up ACOG, if I remember correctly, so.
But this was not a part, this was not appropriated for.
Right.
For the CIP funds.
Right.
So are there engineering fees involved in this?
Well, there would be, but if, if you authorize us to go ahead and do the project, but what we ought to do is go pursue the ACOG funding first, and then we can then do the design and the specification.
There's engineering fees if they move forward with the project.
Project, yes.
This is step one, but not.
Not with just moving the money.
This is the first step, not the last step.
Yes, that's correct. And we always prepare an engineering fee letter. We bring it to you and you authorize that when we, before we expend the money.
What did we approve last month for striping? I thought we approved something.
We did sixty-third and MacArthur intersection two months ago.
Yeah.
Two months ago, yeah. And it looks nice and it's much safer.
I've had a lot of people say thank you, bike riders specifically.
So stepwise, if you move the money or appropriate the money for this, then we'll come back to you with a design fee specification. You can approve that. We'll pursue the ACOG funding money. If you don't get that and you decide you want to do the project, then we can do the project. If you don't want to do the project, then we don't spend the money.
Is it eighty-twenty with ACOG?
Um, I think the safety funds are, can be ninety percent.
Ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, I have a question, and this may be stupid question. You say a design, I mean, these are lines.
Right, well.
So, I mean.
It's, it's a bid package. I mean, anything that, yeah.
I could draw some lines and charge a fee.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't understand.
Well, we have to, we have to prepare a bid package per the state statute, because you're a municipality, we still have to prepare a bid package that will go out for competitive bids per the state statute. You have to have an engineer that puts a seal on that.
And I'll, I'll correct you on that. Almost any other city wouldn't have to go to full-blown competitive bidding, but our charter, the competitive bidding threshold right now for full-blown competitive bidding got increased to a hundred grand for the project. Our charter sets it at five grand. So you're gonna have to go out to competitive bidding, which means you can't just have a piece of paper that we draw lines on. You're gonna have to have engineering documents that we ensure that the people, this is what they're bidding on, so we get what we pay for.
It's government at its best.
So charter at its best.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Government at its half-decade ago best.
Hey, what do we have to do to change that?
Vote to the people.
Hey, we can do that. Votes come, elections coming up, guys.
And it could be as simple as replace that provision in the charter with the city will comply with the Competitive Bidding Act.
Right.
Which would then subject us to the Competitive Bidding Act, including changes in the Competitive Bidding Act, like when they went from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand a couple of years ago.
And then you could do what's considered, you know, a more simplified process. You could just run it through, you could put out a procurement and have a striping contractor come in.
So what's the, whenever we're talking about, talking to ACOG, what is the timeline on that? Because I know, you know, there's a lot of concerns about green.
So I think, let's see, it opens up back up here. They'll have, they'll have more funding available next year.
Next year, okay. So go through the winter without having safety on MacArthur?
So is it fair to say that if they appropriate the money tonight, it'll be in the next year's budget, because we're probably not gonna spend.
You probably will not spend it this fiscal year.
But this would allow you to show the commitment in terms of, okay.
And it would, if you have the funds appropriated, then you can actually vote on a resolution that goes into ACOG that says you're willing to spend the matching money. If you don't have the money appropriated, then we'll have to do.
Right.
And we've done it before. We've had to have the resolution and we've had to appropriate the money all in the same night, so.
Yep.
This is on the table. It was a priority that, that at one point you guys wanted to add some striping on. We can, we can do this project whenever you want to do the project.
Thank you Connie.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
This supplemental appropriation.
Thank you.
Evans?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Myers?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Mayor's approved.
All right, wonderful. Discussion, item number ten, discussion of possible action on, action to transition from the rear loader to sanitation trucks to the polycart with side-loading, Termon. I know, my name's first. We've had this discussion already. Staff has done a lot of work to get this done.
Staff being Mike.
Staff being Mike.
Yep.
And I'm sure bacon would help too, and, you know. But this is, this is where I think we need to go, because it's one, gonna save us money in the long run. It's gonna allow us to keep our CDL drivers, because we will be not hundreds of thousands of dollars in the red with money being a big concern. We pay quarter million dollars a year-ish on temporary help every single day since two thousand, and it's just a nightmare for staff to deal with, and it's old and it needs to go away. That is why I brought this to the table, because we need to change and we need to be in the black. We run a city as a business and we need to be there, and this is one of the biggest ways that we can help get rid of some of our deficit that we're eating this year and every year moving forward.
Not to mention the loose trash from people putting their bags out on the curb and the cats and the dogs get in it and.
HOA's calling, get upset?
Yeah.
All right, I said my part.
You said your part. In your packet, there's a sheet that says residential sanitation operational cost. The first column says reference, it should be seventeen dollars and fifty cents. That was the old rate in twenty eighteen. The bottom number should be a minus two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. On the next column, the reference should be nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the bottom number should be zero. When you look across from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four, I took all the, the costs associated with the residential rear loader, and it shows that we have, we could have captured just a little bit over one million dollars. Labor was one of the biggest costs. It increased about eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Landfill costs increased about thirty-five thousand dollars. Diesel in twenty-two was somewhere around national average of five dollars, so in that timeframe, about thirty-two thousand in diesel. Another cost was the temporary labor. In twenty eighteen, it was somewhere around twelve dollars and fourteen cents an hour. Went up to about twenty-two, twenty-three, went up to fifteen dollars and fourteen cents an hour, and this year it is twenty dollars and fourteen cents an hour. So we've only been able to capture two permanent carriers. We had one of those guys quit last week, so we have one permanent carrier, so we have four temporary carriers at twenty dollars an hour. So this is a labor-intensive process. We have three trucks, we have three drivers, six carriers, a foreman, so it's a labor-intensive process. If you decide as a council that the community wants to keep this system in place to break even, your costs are gonna be somewhere around thirty-four dollars a month to break even with all the expense costs. And what is it now? Uh, we're at twenty-four dollars. About a thirty-three percent increase.
Yeah.
So if, if you went to the side loader, it would probably take trucks, trucks are a big thing right now after post-COVID. Chassis are available, limited availability. It would be six months probably before we could get a truck. Carts are out about at two months. The tippers, we could probably have done in two months.
And Mike, I had a question too. With the number that you gave for the polycarts, was that two per household?
We figured one and a half on average.
One and a half on average, okay.
Some people would just want one, some people would want two.
Right.
And the resident has to buy those?
So what I, what my proposal is.
City buys it. The city would purchase those.
We'll have to purchase them, but my, my thought process in this is that first one city covers. If you want an additional one, they pay for it.
Right.
That's good.
Because, monthly, because ninety-six, ninety-six gallons is huge. That's bigger than most people having two trashcans combined now.
Yeah, because they're thirty-gallon.
Yeah.
And that's why it would be once a week, right?
Yeah, and we would change it down to once a week.
Right.
And how much would our bill go up?
Ten dollars.
Okay, for one.
Per month.
I think we're confusing two different items here. We don't know, I mean, he, the second, next agenda item is the rate for the garbage.
Correct.
So we don't know, if, if we stick with what we have, the rate goes up to thirty-four dollars. If we go to the polycarts, we don't have that answer, do we?
So the first item is discussion on, do we want to change?
Right.
Correct.
Second one is that if we're going to change, now the numbers are roughly about ten dollars a month more, and my also suggestion is not going within six months. I would rather pay, and Pam would appreciate this, is that we pay as much out of, upfront for a brand-new truck, and we pay cash for the, the polycarts. So it's not just jumping in and transitioning what we have now into the modification of the rear loaders. Bethany did that. It was a nightmare. We need to take our time and phase it in, but it's gonna cost capital upfront to get it done. That's what my suggestion is. Mike and I talked about it. I just think that's more wisdom. That's what my suggestion is. Mike and I talked about it. I just think that's more wisdom, to be patient, to get it done and done right. But we still need to raise the rates, cause we're still negative in the red period and have been for years in residential.
Yeah, we're running in the red now.
Yeah.
And then, so you have to have an increase to get back in the black.
Right.
But if you want to then still acquire some capital money towards the new, and it has to go up even more if you're gonna.
Well, if we're not, so Mike, how much, so we kind of roughly talked rough numbers, that if we get back into the black, we're talking about around a hundred to two hundred thousand dollar, like, shift of not being negative, which means that that puts two hundred thousand or a hundred and eighty or a hundred, a hundred thousand back into public works, cause that's where the money all needs to go.
At twenty-four dollars a month.
At thirty-four dollars a month. Cause right now, it's at twenty-four.
Right now, as I understand, I haven't seen the numbers, but as I understand it, you're running a business activity.
In the red.
And you're having to subsidize the cost of activity with tax revenue, which is for governmental activities. This, as I understand, would get you back to break even regardless of whether or not you make any change.
Right.
And if you make a change, then you'd be looking at the rates, and as you got more information, I mean, to my way of thinking, if you're gonna run it as a business, you may have to spend some money out of CIP upfront, but hopefully you would set the rates to not just break even, but to generate some extra money that would cover future capital costs like replacement of polycarts and long-term replacement of trucks, so that you weren't having to spend CIP money. You'd be spending some of your business money that you're bringing in. Cause I mean, CIP is still tax revenue. It's easier for me to justify buying a fire truck or a police vehicle, which those are not revenue generating, they're governmental activities, as opposed to that side of Mike's shop, which is more of a business activity that you're having to use government money to subsidize. And I mean, if the taxpayers would prefer to have tax revenue subsidized, that just means can't do as much with streets, can't do as much with police, fire, more traditional governmental activities. A lot of cities, years ago, Roger might be the only one on, on the horseshoe right now who would even remember this. I think I handed out, you know, a segment from Bethany's audit. You know, Bethany runs their utilities through their Public Works Authority. I mean, they're actually employees over there. They were generating about a million dollars worth of profit a, a year that they were sending to the general fund side to subsidize the governmental activities. The stuff that sales tax pays for, you guys are doing it the reverse. You're using governmental money to pay for business activities. It's supposed to work the other way. Can't charge a profit on the government side, you can charge a profit on the business side. So, you could be raising this to forty-four dollars a month. I'm not saying that'd be palatable and using that extra money to help subsidize streets, subsidize other governmental activities. But you're losing money right now.
Oh, absolutely. And I totally can see the subsidization and, you know, those numbers are, are startling. I guess where I'm coming from is we're gonna have to raise the residential rate on today's environment. Does that hold going forward to the polycarts then?
Right. Just for, in our ordinance, there is an actually, an eight oh eight, one fifty-five annual review and adjustment of fees and charges. So, it says the city councils should yearly review goals basically, or rates and determine if you need to adjust those rates. So, that's what I was trying to show in this spreadsheet over the years, that the price with the pay raises. I mean, you have the base pay rate, you have your benefits, which are also increased by four percent. So, that's why that number keeps increasing every year. So, we have a large number of people. So, you have, basically, you have six people that are getting those benefits along with the carriers, with their going up from twelve to twenty dollars an hour. So, the price is just gradually creeping up. Equipment costs, fuel costs, all that adds up. So, this is monies you could have captured to have available for the general fund. I know that they've used, the front loaders have two people, so they're obviously making more money than the residential. So, that's what's been covering somewhat the residential in the past. So, I know, I know the rate is somewhere around two hundred, two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in the green for the front loader, so that helps offset. And that's how it was set up in the past. Till two thousand thirteen, there was, nobody could separate the residential and commercial. It was all lumped together. There, there wasn't a breakout of that. Also, another expense that's, is our quarterly big trash pickup. In two thousand fifteen, just trying to track costs with loads and I came up with somewhere between fifty thousand dollars a year, maybe seventy thousand, because for instance, one, one of the grappling truck loads, which is forty cubic yards, is about three hundred and twenty dollars. The seventeen yarder is somewhere around a hundred and seventy dollars a load. And you were in the recycling here last month, you saw the big pile of debris back there. So, I've actually got last year's, all the load tickets last year, I'm gonna go through and actually separate out by the truck numbers to come up with the real, you know, the actual landfill fee that we're spending for commercial, residential, and the bulky waste. And one option might be to just go to one cleanup a year and then people just pay as they go. The rest of the year, we charge for the grappling truck or the, you know, the dumpsters. We, we get quite a few people using the dumpsters, which helps share along the code side, because it makes it easier for people to get rid of trash instead of letting it accumulate. So, it's kind of a yes, or is it a good deal? Yes, it's a great deal. But that's another thing you might look at. The front loader could bring your costs down to maybe in the twenty-two dollar a month range, break even. Somewhere in there is the numbers I'm coming up with, so. But I, but I think in, you know, Pam's mentioning the budget, this, this could be an opportunity to generate, like Bethany does, is revenue that could support other services in the city. So, I think it's really important to come up with a plan, maybe to see where we could be in five years and try to recoup some of these costs, because post-COVID, everything has just increased. The difficulty of employees has increased. CDL drivers, the cost is just gonna go up. The federal government now, or the state requires a, you have to go to school now to train them. In the past, we could get an employee, we could have them drive with a licensed driver and then they could go down and, and take the test and get a CDL. Now, you have to go to school. It's five, seven thousand dollars. That was the last driver we hired here a couple of weeks ago. Had spent seven thousand dollars to get his CDL, so.
And he just quit. Is that the one that just quit?
Uh, that was a carrier. Mike, to help with distinguishing these two items, if I'm hearing you correctly and hearing the mayor correctly, is item ten sort of a first step towards what we might do in the future, while item eleven is essentially a regardless of what we do, cause it sounds like if we did change for the future, it wouldn't be immediate. Item eleven is more about the today and at least getting our rates to where they need to be with what our costs are today.
Correct.
Okay, so, ten's about where we're going for the future. Eleven is about getting to break even now. And then, if you do decide on item ten to move in a new direction, you'd obviously want to look at the rates once you get a better sense of what the costs are.
And I would say too, that one of the problems, I don't know why this council has never done this. I don't know if it's an administrative problem or another problem, but how long has it been? Five years since this is?
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen. Same thing with sewer. I mean, it's been ten years probably, whatever that was. So, attaching this to CPI, because this board in the past has not wanted to make the hard decisions. Nobody wants to raise rates. Well, sucks, I'm sorry.
I'll raise rates.
Ditto.
So, but I'm just saying that in the future, because it's happened for the last however long, people are not waiting to raise rates on people. Well, we can't not do that. So, we need to attach it to CPI, so there's automatic triggers, so maybe it doesn't matter who sits on this horseshoe. And Matt, there's probably a way to make the ordinance say that.
Yeah.
Let's just come to item eleven.
Not yet. All right, do you guys, do you guys want to change over, so we can go ahead and get, oh, done for item number ten?
I mean, item eleven, as I understand it, is independent of ten in as much as, if you vote in favor of ten, it'll probably be six to twelve months before you'd be looking at what the rates need to be with a transition service.
There's a lot of things that have to go in. If they decide that that's what they want to do, there is a lot of things that have to be taken care of before you get your first tipper arm or first dumpster.
Including, but not limited to, a lot of things coming back before you for approval. Changes in, potential changes in the budget, once you appropriate money, potential expenditure of money for the equipment for the polycarts.
It's gonna be a multi-year.
This is kind of one of those, as I'm reading it, before they move forward, they want to make sure that you're willing to move forward. Regardless of how you move forward, that's where item eleven comes in for the immediate. Let's at least get back to break even and then figure out, whatever direction you go. If you don't change, then we just figure out what the rates are year to year. And as the mayor said, we'll, we'll have a different ordinance before you to essentially take both your utility rates and tie them to automatic increases year over year. But for right now, you gotta increase. The recommendation on eleven is gonna be, you gotta increase your rates to catch back up today. So, for ten, where do you, where do you want to go for, do you want to stick with it?
Do you want to go to the side tipper, or do you want to stay with bags? That's really the question.
Polycarts, once a week.
That's the question.
No, we're not committing anything yet. Just is this the direction we're moving? Cause you're looking at a year before you could really do anything.
Before anything's, before any money is probably even spent, it's probably a year out.
You're, you're probably looking a few months before you see your first item, which is probably gonna be in the budget. That there'd be something, if you, if you gave the go-ahead that we want to start moving in this direction, my guess is that Pam and, and the mayor and Mike would be including that within the budget for next year for some of the anticipated costs as part of that transition. But before they do that.
We need the approval.
They'd know if you're on board.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving towards the carts. I think using manual labor to do this work is cost prohibitive.
Amen.
We've gotta go automated as much as possible.
And there was two surveys. Wiley, Wiley did a survey back in the day. I think it was sixty-five-ish percent were for keeping it the same. Jim Mickley did a survey. I think the number got closer to fifty. It's down in the fifty-eight percent. So, so yes, it's a decision. If you're happy with the service and you're willing to pay for it, this is what it costs.
But that was a completely different scenario that they were doing that survey over. That was unlimited curb side, two cans on the side of the house picked up. That's what the survey was.
Oh, it was, okay.
And I remember specifically, this was a huge deal when we went through that.
It was a nightmare.
And it was also.
Pam just had a flashback.
Did we want to maintain the personnel that we had that were working? Or did you want to lay those people off if you went to either a private provider or a subsidized? Well, those people aren't here anymore. We're using temps to do that work. We don't have unlimited pickup at the curb, because we had some lawn mowing companies that took advantage. They'd mow all day, bring all their bags home and put them on the curb and expect us to pay to get rid of. So, what was surveyed then isn't what we have now. So, it's, it's almost a no-brainer now. It was sixty, forty then.
It was also under old rates, which you.
Yes.
breached probably about a decade ago at this point.
So, I think that we're, if you had, if you did that survey now, it'd probably be seventy, thirty to switch. Cause I was a proponent of keeping it the way it was, and I'm not a proponent of keeping it that way anymore. And I think that several other people have changed their mind.
You know, you know, right now, we have four forty-gallon cans. You can also add eight thirty-three gallon bags.
Yeah.
And then you can do unlimited limbs, fifty pounds or less, under four feet. So, you know, volume extra clearly, and you know, to, to pick all that up and crush it and take it to the landfill, it just costs money.
Is that a regular pickup day? You can do limbs?
You, you, you can, you can if they're bundled.
If you tie them up, four feet and red.
Four feet, okay. Um, if we, if we do this, are we still gonna have our October big trash pickup? Because it's.
Right now, you have quarterly pickup.
Yeah.
And I just, I was just throwing out, if you're, you know, Pam gave us the budget, you know, if you're looking at recouping some of the costs, which this bulky waste is not kind of really included in the, in this twenty-four dollars right now. We're paying above that, so if you divided that by your thirty-one hundred rate pairs.
Curious about next month, because it was coming up so soon. If we did the emergency one, it would kick in immediately?
It'd kick in next.
It, it would be something you would think about maybe like next year.
Okay.
So, we're just gonna continue just like it is now. If, if you decide to make a, a change, you could, you could change from quarterly to, to maybe a, a spring cleanup or. And then, and then people would be charged, you would just modify the ordinance to say, you get one cleanup in April.
Yeah.
And then you would pay for the rest and you can determine a rate.
And we wouldn't get it till the truck, we get the truck anyway, so.
Well, this is different. I mean, the, the bulky waste, we use a grappling truck and sometimes we use the rear loaders, but we try to use the, you know, mechanical advantage as much as possible.
I do have, why does it still say twenty-four dollars on the ordinance, emergency ordinance, instead of thirty-four? I thought it.
Let's take care of the first one first.
Yeah, item number ten. We'll take it.
And I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the transition, slow transition towards the side tipper and including the retrofit of a couple of rears that it's got listed. But we're just beginning the transition.
Which includes polycarts, right?
Which will include polycarts to go with it at that time.
The truck.
So, so I know from Bethany, we have a gentleman that works with, with me now from Bethany that actually did the conversion from the polycarts, from the traditional to the curb side to the polycarts. So, there's a lot of things to think about. You know, you have handicap considerations. You have to roll the cart, and you roll the cart to the curb. There's all sorts of considerations. You know, obviously, our truck, as we do it now, runs down the street one way. It can go to both sides of the street. Obviously, the side loader has to make two trips. Obviously, you would go from two times a week pickup to one time a week pickup. So, change is always difficult. So, there is the same amount of trash either way.
Right.
You're going down the streets either one time twice a week, or the truck's going one time in both directions. Still the same amount of trash. It's just your cost of operation.
Use more gas. Don't you have to go both ways?
Well, you've got three trucks. You've got three trucks versus one, so, so it's probably gonna be less, it's gonna be less fuel.
The tippers that we're retrofitting are only for backup if the main truck goes down.
Correct.
You don't have trash that can't be picked up. It's just gonna be.
Unless you want to bring it through the yard, so.
I second the motion made by council member Evans.
Can I?
Yeah, before we call roll.
Yeah. So, what we're looking at is just moving into the transition, cause right now, we don't have the money.
Correct. Just moving.
But so, this is what, twenty twenty-five, maybe twenty twenty-six? Twenty twenty-five. But towards the fall of twenty twenty-five, probably a year from now.
We're probably eighteen months out. And I mean, really, because if we're talking about polycarts, then we just don't do it. If you don't have the money, you don't.
We're gonna charge the money on our rates, because that's where you're gonna get it. If you don't spend it on something else, you'll have the money.
You're charging the money on the rates to break even.
Item number eleven should cover that problem.
So, in your packet, you have a picture of a truck and it shows our current pickup schedule.
Yes.
The side loader. Now, if you go to the second page, if you decide to finance the equipment, it gives you, I just made an assumption of six percent. It gives you a monthly payment for the truck, the polycarts. If you want to buy them in five years or ten years, it gives you a six percent assumption, zero down. It gives you the cost, total paid, et cetera. The tippers, I would just probably buy outright from the CIP at sixty thousand dollars and equip the trucks.
Yeah.
United Engines supplied the bids, so you have actual numbers in here for the actual truck. We have the carts and the tippers. So, all that information is in your packet for the side loader.
Jim, to answer your question.
So, instead of buying, sorry.
No, go for it.
Instead of spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a truck, you're gonna pay that truck and the dumpsters and I think the tippers we could have, were able to.
Probably, I would just smile.
But you're gonna spread those costs over time, so we could actually do them instead of having four hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck and then you can't buy anything else the rest of the year.
Now, now I know others.
Yeah, because that's why, yeah, that's how I wanted it done, because spending half of our CIP money on one item is stupid.
Yeah.
So, just like I've asked police and fire, hey, what are we doing over the next five years, so we can plan for it and just do that? You know, and intention would be, for those of you that'll be sitting on the budget committee, which will be starting next month, my intention is that every bit of money that is saved and put over here goes to Public Works to make sure that we can pay for those things and other things and not into the general fund. That's my goal and objective. That's my goal and objective because that's where it needs to be, that's where it needs to stay, that's what's making us money. So we need to take care of that part first before we ever consider putting it anywhere else.
Pam, can we do that actually earmark the dollars and cents that come in strictly for that?
With budgets.
It's called budgeting.
Yeah, during our budget time, that's what we'll discuss.
One thing too is he has trucks that he'll be able to sell.
And get some capital back.
And whenever those vehicles are sold, that money will go back into CIP to help pay for the new trucks that we're purchasing. Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Call roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Yay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Truby?
Yay.
Myers?
Yes.
Mayer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number eleven, I will go ahead and be the bad guy and I will go ahead and put a motion in to approve. But you guys have questions.
Why does it say twenty-four dollars instead of thirty-four dollars? I thought it was gonna be.
All those things that are yellow, you're gonna have to tell us what to put in there. Matt's gonna type it up as you go.
That's the current rate.
Okay.
And don't forget, we have the annual review of fees here that's in the ordinance actually.
I thought this was gonna be the new rate, okay.
That means we, it needs to change, right?
Yeah, okay. Yep.
And Matt, did you put a paragraph in there about CPI?
No, that, I'm gonna come with a separate ordinance to do both sewer and trash. They're all linked.
Sewer, we will not have to do anything until after the first of the year. I talked to John. He said we are good to go. So my recommendation is to do it at the same time we do the annual change. That way, if they're not using as much water, maybe it won't hurt them as much. And so it's just a one-time change every April.
It'll be two separate ones.
This would be effective, I would ask for October first.
I mean, if it's approved as written with the emergency clause, it would be.
Well, that's what we'd like to hear.
So we are currently, I don't wanna do this like an auctioneer, but currently at twenty-four, go ahead, twenty-five.
Can we just.
In order to break even, we have to be at thirty-five.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-three dot one-two, so I think we need to be looking at thirty-four, thirty-five.
Yeah.
Right, you don't wanna just break even right now.
But if we start it now, it'll start the next cycle and so that way.
Yeah, she just did the billing today, so then as the billing, it would be.
And that way that'll be piling up while we're.
Help us get to the end of the year. Since we don't know where we're gonna get money.
Yeah, so our number needs to be at thirty-four minimum. Correct.
Yeah.
Matt's looking around, he's waiting on an number.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion for we increase.
Wanna go thirty-four or do we wanna go thirty-five and make it our nice round number?
Or even thirty-six?
Go ahead, thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Forty!
I like thirty-five.
Well, thirty-six is a good even number, seven odd number. So.
I was just thinking of five is.
I'll make a motion that we increase our sewer rates, our not sewer rates, our trash rates to thirty-six dollars.
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
I second it.
For single-family residential.
Single-family residential.
What about the additional per can pickup? Are we changing that as well?
Should we, yeah.
Mike, what do we need to say?
Should've thought of that, shouldn't we?
I mean, is that a frequent thing?
We discussed this a lot, I'm trying to figure out how we were gonna raise the other ones.
It doesn't really happen that often. If they put out more than the eight bags, they generally will just pick up eight and then when they come back, the next pickup.
That's all that happened, my neighborhood today.
Not, doesn't happen real often, but what is that, what is that a ratio of?
So you don't encourage the guys to go ahead and pick it up and make a note to bill them for it? How does that work? I mean, how should that work?
That's, that's generally the way they do it. So they're kinda giving the customers a little bit of a break. I mean, they could pick it all up at once, but if they're coming twice a week, they'll just be back buying two days, so.
But I think we should make it at least three dollars, so when we do the one, we, we don't leave the trash out for a week or whatever. Did you all hear my discussion with Director Torman?
We were having our own.
I think we should change the extra bag rate to at least three dollars because by then they'll be picking once a week.
He was pitching five dollars over here.
Five, okay, I'm good with that.
It's not going to impact very many people. It's gonna be the occasional. There's no need to make it the smallest amount.
Yeah.
It needs to be prohibitive. Eight bags is already enough.
But we need to make sure they pick it up and then bill them. Because right now he said they don't, they just don't pick them all up.
Well, that's the key. I don't know how the billing would work, how you keep track of that, that's.
They just, if they go up and there's like fifty bags, they'll, they'll pick them up and then I get a sheet.
They turn it into Crystal, the governor's slip that says bill these people for this many bags.
And if they, if they do that once and they get a bill at five dollars a bag, they won't do it again.
Unless it's cheaper than going to the.
Unless it's cheaper than going themselves, so. And we can afford to do it that way.
Yeah, I'm good with five dollars for the extra bags.
And then there's the multi-dwelling, so five dollars on that? Or ten dollars per month, is, we need to change that as well?
Per unit.
Per unit?
Essentially for, like for apartment complexes, it'd be ten dollars per apartment. Bill to the apartment complex.
So we need to address that as well.
That's commercial.
What do they pick up? If we build a complex, how many?
Is that not like a commercial?
Dumpsters, those are the commercial front loaders.
Yeah, but how many loads do you take out? Is that just one dump of that commercial?
They, they, they pay, they have a set number of dumpsters, one. For instance, you could have one dumpster, you could pick up one time a week or five times a week, which is in the chart there. So if you pick it up five times a week, there's a, a fee for, for five times pickup.
So is that under residential or commercial?
That would be the commercial. That's what they're talking about in multifamily, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so there's.
So that's commercial.
Yeah, so that's commercial.
I don't have that, I didn't print it off.
Okay, so it's per unit.
Does that need to be adjusted as our question, Mike? Yeah, commercials.
I meant to modify that. So what I've got so far, if you're looking at your ordinance, subsection A is the only one that I've made any changes to. From twenty-four, and I, basically what I did when I sent this to Pam, not knowing which rates we might be looking at, was I just highlighted every rate that I could find in the ordinance so that it would call attention to it.
Nothing that needs to be addressed just by the foundance.
So right now in subsection A would be the only changes, there'd be two, from twenty-four to thirty-six dollars per month per residence and from two dollars fifty cents per can or bag per pickup to five dollars flat.
Right.
Yeah, that's all we have.
Do we need to address anything, Mike? Because it is commercial and commercial is fine right now.
Well, we've got the multiple dwelling units, which is just.
Which is considered residential.
Well, he said it's commercial.
We just have like the little strip malls, sometimes we'll just use cans instead of the dumpsters.
Okay, but they're at ten.
If it's more.
Per unit.
Ten dollars per unit per month.
Commercial, not requiring a dumpster, maximum four forty gallon can, the subsection E, picked up at a base rate of twenty-five dollars per month. If more than four, six dollars per can.
How many do we roughly have, do you think, Mike?
I'm not sure, I heard Jay, I think he's counting.
How many, how many multi-dwellings do we have that the ten dollar thing?
That's what I'm.
Counting, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought he was counting.
Cause that's, that's a lot cheaper than a standard residence. If they're at ten dollars for four bags and the residence is thirty-five dollars for eight bags, that's.
I don't really understand why it was different. Because each unit is a family, just like in a single house.
Base unit. Of course, they may not have trash in the backyard, they may not have all that other stuff that they'd be putting in since they're, I, I don't know. But it should be at least half of what a single family would be.
Fifteen dollars?
It'd be eighteen. Go ahead and add eighteen in there.
Okay.
So I'm eighteen for the multi.
I don't think there's more than five. I don't think there's maybe five or six of these, four units or six units.
Okay.
Compulsed by the use of an eight yarder dumpster.
All right, so subsection B would be amended from ten to eighteen.
Yeah.
We don't really need to address these commercial rates, do we? Cause they're, they're fine right now.
That's the front loader, that is the front loader.
Those aren't actually commercial rates, those are rates for if you rent a dumpster.
Oh, these are dumpster rentals.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't realize that. Do we have?
Like what percentage do we need to bump those up?
Of what?
Of the dumpsters.
Rental of the dumpsters.
I thought we weren't gonna touch anything commercial wise.
Rental for the.
Rental.
Rental, oh, the rental.
That chart on there is the rental for residential to.
Oh, you're talking about the residential four yarder?
Yeah, so it says two, three, four, six, eight and seventeen.
But that's the monthly charge for commercial users shall be based upon the certain. So C is commercial with dumpsters. If you get down to E, it's commercial without dumpsters.
So commercial users is a dumpster.
I feel like we'll be doing good if we get these approved, the first two, A and D.
Should we just raise the?
I say we leave that, leave the rest of them alone. Our residential's what's going in red, right?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
Percent.
Fifty percent.
It's half of residents.
And a hundred percent on the additional pickup.
Fifty percent and press the board on the.
Yeah, fifty percent on that, everything attached to residential? Cause that's what everything else was, so renting the. How much does it cost, Mike, for the different rental, for the different dumpsters that are rented by residential?
Oh, it's seventeen fifty delivery fee and then seventeen dollars to empty it each time.
On which size though?
Four yard.
Four yard? Is that the only one?
That's actually written out, yeah.
If you're looking on the ordinance, that's subsection H.
H.
They can rent a four yard for thirty days.
Does that cover the cost? That doesn't seem like it would.
Yeah, because you're getting, you're, you're getting a compaction rate of hopefully, you know, four to one. So it also, it's, it helps code enforcement and it gives people an alternative to dispose of items if they have.
Cool.
I, I think it's a price that works. We probably do a hundred, a hundred and fifty a year, may, it might be more than that. But it gives, it, it helps keep Cheryl's number of calls down because people can call, hey, you have a way to get rid of this? Sure.
It helps Cheryl, that's all you had to say, that's good.
Doesn't break the bank and.
And it helps big trash day because if they have it hauled off, they don't have it to put out.
Yeah, perfect, we can leave it alone.
So I think it's a benefit to keep it a little bit lower.
Cool, I think that's it.
But I think we have to address subsection E because you're dealing with cans there, which is, you just raised the residential cans. And those are for those people who, those businesses don't have commercials, that don't have dumpsters but have cans. So I think those should be the same as the other.
Yeah, thirty-six, yeah.
Well, commercial's gonna have a lot more trash than a residential would.
But it's a basic, it's a base rate of twenty-five dollars and then they put six dollars per can.
This is for, this is for the small handful of commercial that don't have dumpsters.
And if they do have more trash, they'll have a dumpster.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Like my business, we just have a can.
Might as well make it match.
How many cans do you have?
We just have the one.
You just have one, so you have one that's.
But we get charged the dumpster rate.
You get charged the twenty-five dollars, we charge you the twenty-five, right?
Did you change it on our billing? Cause we pay ninety-eight dollars right now, just on the.
Oh, so we're, we're making money.
And my boss doesn't mind.
Thank you for your donation.
Okay, yeah, if, if, if you went to the can, so we could change it to twenty-five.
So we're changing it to ninety-eight dollars for.
In the ordinance.
It's fine, we'll talk about it later.
Yeah.
All right, are we changing E?
There's not too many, maybe.
Gonna make it match the residential.
May I have any make it match the residential to thirty-six?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And you could lower the per can down to five, cause it's all the same. For each additional, that's up to you.
I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a big push to lower rates.
No lowering.
Edit that.
So we're all on the same sheet of music. A, changing from twenty-four to thirty-six, from two fifty to five. B, changing from ten dollars to eighteen dollars. E, changing from twenty-five dollars to thirty-six dollars. Those are the changes I've got so far.
Agreed.
Any other things that people would like to address?
If not, what you would be looking for, Mr. Mayor's a motion to approve the ordinance as amended at meeting.
That is what I say. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Mayer?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Truby?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Montaire?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Douglas?
Yes.
Motion approved, sorry.
Pam, I'm sending you both a clean copy and a red line version.
Motion to approve the emergency clause?
Please, and thank you. Second?
Second.
Hold on, Pam, Pam's number. And we're gonna adjourn, not adjourn, but.
Get, let's get through that.
Let's get this first, yeah. Get the emergency clause done, so is.
Okay, so I have Myers and Evans.
Myers and Evans, yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Truby?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince? Montaire?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mayer?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, Mr. Long, would you like to go ahead and do the public works report?
Announce that we're resourcing city council to reconvene after the public works authority.
What he said.
And Pam, I'm emailing both a red line version and a clean copy of the amended ordinance.
All right. Mike, could you put it, the public works authority one for us, please, sir? Please, I said please. Por favor. Muchos.
Muchos.
Muy, muy gracias. Yeah, they need their presentation.
I was going to the slide.
Ah, my bad. Yeah, we'll knock those out really quick. All right, go ahead and call, call to order, declare quorum. Item number two, consent docket, items from the consent docket, under item number three, approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion for item number two.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second it.
Douglas?
Yes.
Morris?
Yay.
Prince?
Okay.
Montaire?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right, item number four, SRB reports. Mr. Long.
Okay, um, this is our monthly report on the wastewater program projects. Um, agenda, we have three items. It's ongoing. It's the twenty twenty-four SSES update. The second is the wastewater master plan update. And the third is the twenty-one inch interceptor. On the SSES, um, we are still going through all of the manhole inspections and addressing and identifying, prioritizing those for rehabilitation or replacement. Uh, we're still going through the smoke testing results that we have citywide. Um, we did finalize and got all of the CCTV on the very first initial, uh, pass using the ARPA-funded SSES. So, uh, all of that is in place and we're receipt, we're now gonna start reviewing the, the last part of that CCTV. And then we did initiate the new CCTV that's gonna finish the rest of the city. We started that, uh, activity in August. That's gonna be going on for three or four months and that's using the OWRB loan forgiveness contract, the one point two million dollar. Uh, we, 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 uh, went through all of the ARPA funds and now we moved into the, uh, OWRB loan forgiveness. So that CCTV, uh, has begun. We won't be starting to see those results till early next year to be able to go through that. So SSES is just gonna be going on, um, through, uh, twenty twenty-five. We'll give you a, a more up-to-date, uh, recommendations and, and all, as far as how we're tying the SSES. Somewhere in November, December, probably more like December. So we'll, we'll give you the evaluation of the SSES and how we've updated the wastewater master plan in December. On the wastewater master plan, um, we are, uh, just finalizing that report. Uh, we're gonna plan on going over that with city staff, uh, in November and then we'll make a more updated, uh, overall presentation to you in December on the wastewater master plan update. So that, that's the model. All that will be complete. Uh, and then that will be, uh, considered the approvable engineering report. And once that's done, then that will satisfy the requirements for the FAP loan that we did, uh, for the ten million dollars in the rest of the program. The last update project is on the twenty-one inch interceptor that goes from fifty-eighth street up, up to just north of sixty-third street, um, through the Capes Middle School area. Do want to report that in the blue, starting from the south, sixty-six percent of the liner has been installed. In fact, I was out there Saturday. Uh, we completed the piece that was in, uh, the Capes Middle School property right by the media center. That was the most troublesome one. We coordinated with the, the school district and, uh, we put that off to where we would do that on a Saturday so that we wouldn't disrupt the, the, uh, the school. Uh, and that got completed. So we've got sixty-six percent of the liner complete. Most, all of that liner will be done by the end of next week. Um, we will do a change order uh, because if you look up in the red circle, uh, that portion of the line that was supposed to be a twenty-one inch line was actually, and was actually much larger than a fifteen inch. It was actually a fifteen inch diameter pipe when it was installed. It had corroded so badly that it had expanded and opened up. And so it was somewhere between nineteen and twenty-some inches, so we had assumed that it was all twenty-one inch. But that was a, uh, a fifteen inch pipe, uh, and so what we'll be doing is we'll do a change order to add in the, uh, open trenching. This will actually work out a little bit better because this is the one that goes back behind the yard with the swimming pool and some other, uh, it was a lot of heavily vegetated area and so that will now be cleaned out on the easement. So all those trees and all that are in there up by the creek bank area will be cleaned up. So that'll be much better in the future for that. Uh, so we'll have to have some additional clearing and grubbing. They are large trees, but at least we're gonna get them off of our easement completely.
Are we gonna go larger than a twenty-one then, since we're putting a pipe in? Or are we gonna stay with the twenty-one?
No, we'll stay with the twenty-one because the, the model is based on that it's a twenty-one inch all the way through this section. It's a twenty-one inch under sixty-third and into the area to the north. Where we would've had the problem is if we had left that fifteen inch segment in there. Um, they, that was just a design they probably did because there was a, a, a pretty significant grade elevation. And so they probably were looking at it from a standpoint of, we'll put a smaller pipe in and it'll, the velocity will take care of the flow.
Flowing.
That doesn't really work very well, so, but, uh, that was probably the, the thought back when that was put in, so. Um, so yeah, everything will be twenty-one inch.
Nice.
And that is the update for this month, so.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you, sir. All right, I will, uh, take a motion.
Hey, Mark, hey, Mark.
Yeah, sir.
How about them Cowboys on Sunday, huh?
I will say there was an item that was supposed to be on the agenda that I missed getting it on the agenda, but I sent you the information for it. And that is the agreement with the attorney firm that helps us get the Oklahoma City water shut-offs done. The attorney that had been doing it, um, is the attorney for the Public Works Authority Trust.
Johnny.
And he changed law firms. But the law firm he was with, everyone in that office knows how to take care of what he was doing. So I am going to have that attorney that's gonna be handling that actually come to the meeting next month so that everybody can meet him and know who will be doing that. And it is on the agenda next month, even though you got the paperwork this month.
Is that why you don't have any, like, shut-offs this time, what's the feeling?
Is that the rednecky?
Well, yeah. And they had asked us originally to wait a month or so before we were ready to go again and then I just missed putting it on the agenda. That was my mistake. Sorry about that. I was ready to go for more.
You don't wanna delay shutting people's water.
All right. Take a motion for adjournment?
To adjourn?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
I'll second. I'll adjourn then.
Myers?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Buntheir?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
Uh, reconvene the, uh, regular city council meeting. Item number twelve, discussion on possible action to vote into an executive session to discuss the status of negotiations between Oklahoma City War Acres, or City of War Acres and FLP and IAFF and collective bargaining agreement fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'll need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Myers?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Prince?
Yay.
Morris?
Yay.
Buntheir?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Tribby?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yay.
Motion approved.
All right. Buntheir needs to go.
And you all get to leave and we get to stay here. You guys go and remember, that's the way we do it now.
You'll party in.
I know. That's why this turned.
Oh, we're gonna stay.
I'm gonna arrest you.